So, Mr. Chair, when you are ready, we can begin today's meeting.
Perfect. Then let's begin our meeting. Good morning and welcome to our virtual meeting of Brampton's Committee of Council. We'll begin the meeting with a clerk calling the rule for attendance at today's meeting. Mr. Clerk, please.
Members of committee, I will call your name. Please indicate your presence. Counselor Dillon.
Present.
Counselor Singh. Counselor Singh? Oh, okay. Thank you. You've indicated your audio is not working, but you are present. Counselor Fortini?
Good morning, I'm here.
Counselor Williams?
Morning, I'm here.
Counselor Maderos?
Here.
Counselor Paleshi?
Good morning, present.
Counselor Willins?
Present.
Counselor Visante?
Present.
Counselor Santos?
Happy birthday, Counselor Paleshi and Mayor Brown.
And Mayor Brown, one of the two birthday boys is present. I see that.
Yes.
And Chair Bowman is present. All members are present, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Mr. Clerk. The next item is the approval of the agenda. Does any member wish to add a business item to today's meeting? If so, please use the chat function and add your name to this list. Michael, Counselor Paleshi, you're up. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Counselor, Mr. Chair Bowman. I'd like to add just a quick discussion about the order of the agenda. Please, please, and thank you.
So, Mr. Chair, that would be proposed discussion item 8.3.1 under Legislative Services.
And I thought I was going to get away with nothing on that agenda. Thank you. Next up, Counselor Maderos.
Thank you through you, Chair. I'd like to add a discussion on police, cyber police training college, Rarson's proposal. I believe it's on a referred matters list, but I would like to just have a quick discussion, please.
Mr. Chair, that would be proposed item 9.3.1 under Economic Development section.
All right. Thank you very much. Counselor Willins is next.
Yeah, thank you through Chair. Peter, I don't know if this would be a new item. It's just going to be a quick update on the Backyard Garden program. I guess it could go under the mayor's COVID update because it is kind of COVID related.
Through you, Mr. Chair. That could be appropriate. There was discussion in the past during the COVID update regarding backyard garden programs.
Okay, we can place it there. It'll be just a quick update.
Thank you very much. Next up, Counselor Dillon.
Yes, it's 8.3.1, discussion on excessive noise from motor vehicles.
So, Mr. Chair, that would be proposed item now 8.3.2, as Counselor Paleshi has already added an proposed item regarding excessive noise from vehicles.
Okay. Is there anyone else? Seeing nobody else, we have a motion moved by Counselor Dillon to approve the agenda instead of seeking a recording vote. Oops, sorry.
Quick question. Was my item already added by Counselor Paleshi?
No, Counselor Paleshi added an item earlier that became 8.3.1, so yours is now 8.3.
Oh, okay. Okay, thank you.
No problem. Instead of seeking a recorded vote for this item, I will ask, is there anyone opposed to this motion? Otherwise, your vote will count in the affirmative. Are there any objections? None seen, so the motion carries. Meetings of municipal councils are open to the public for transparency and accountability, and our meetings will continue to be as well. With a few precautions and limitations, members and most staff are participating electronically in this meeting. The public can still access and participate in the meeting in a number of ways. Watching this meeting remotely through the city's live stream and playback of the archive video stream. Registering with the city clerk's office as a virtual delegate to participate in the meeting. Submitting questions about the agenda business and decisions made at Committee of Council today. By emailing the city clerk's office at cityclerksoffice@brampton.ca with your question, which may be read into the public meeting record during the 15-minute public question period before the end of the meeting. We are now at declarations of interest under the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. Do any members have a declaration of pecuniary interest under the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act for any matter to be discussed on today's agenda? Seeing none, the clerk will so note for the minutes. Consent. Committee, as part of our new consent process, I will read each item that is subject to the consent motion, and any member may verbally identify the item to be held for debate during the meeting. Any item not held for debate will be considered as part of the consent motion and voted on for approval. Any of the following agenda items will not be subject to consent motion for approval. Announcements, delegations, presentations, added new business, member discussion items, member question period, public question period. I'll start reading the relevant agenda items, and members can identify any items to be held for debate. Legislative services, nil. Economic development, nil. Corporate services, 10.2.1, staff report, annual treasurer's statement. Seeing none, that is in consent. Public works, 11.2.1, staff report initiation of subdivision assumption Northwest Brampton Investments, south of Wannless Ward 6. Consent? 11.2.2, staff report initiation of subdivision assumption Bluegrass Valley Properties, Ward 5. Consent? 11.2.3, staff report initiation of subdivision assumption Bluegrass South Limited Registered Plan, north of Williams Parkway, Ward 5. Consent? 11.2.4, staff report initiation of subdivision assumption Landmark Realty Corp., Ward 6. Consent? 11.2.5, staff report automated speed enforcement update, spring 2021.
Hold, please.
Thank you very much. That will be held. 11.4.1, correspondence from Terry Young, interim president and CEO, independent electricity operator, IESO, re-future gas generation in Ontario. Consent? Community Services Section, 12.2.1, staff report, request for budget amendment developer reimbursement, Ward 4. Consent? 12.2.2, staff report, request to begin procurement 2020 and 2021 parks enhancements and community living projects. Consent? 12.3, or 12.2.3, staff report rebudget amendment, the Rose Theatre accessibility and efficiency upgrades. Hold, please. That will be held. Thank you. Who was that? Counselor Willins? Correct. Thank you. 12.3.1 minutes, Brampton Sports Hall of Fame Committee, May 6, 2021. Consent? Closed session. 15.1, open meeting exception under Section 239 of the Municipal Act. A proposed acquisition or disposition of land by the municipality or local board. Consent? 15.2, open meeting exception under Section 239 of the Municipal Act 2001. A proposed pending acquisition or disposition of land by the municipality or local board. It appears that is in consent, so closed session will be in consent. Mr. Clerk, can you now summarize the items to be included on the consent motion for approval?
Through you, Mr. Chair. To members of committee, the following items are added to the consent motion under Corporate Services, 10.2.1. Staff report, annual treasurer's statement report, summary of activity for 2020. Under Public Works and Engineering Section, items 11.2.1 through to 11.2.4 regarding initiation of subdivision assumptions in wards 5 and 6. Item 11.4.1 is also added to consent correspondence from the Independent Electricity System Operators, IESO, regarding future gas generation in Ontario. An item held is held by Counselor Santos, 11.2.5, a staff report regarding automated speed enforcement update, spring 2021. Under Community Services Section, item 12.2.1, a request for a budget amendment for developer reimbursement for the Brampton Block 5 landowner group is added to consent. Item 12.2.2 is added to consent regarding 2020 and 2021 parks enhancement and community living projects, request to begin procurement. Item 12.3.1, minutes from the Sports Hall of Fame Committee meeting of May 6, is added to consent. Item held for debate by Counselor Willins is item 12.2.3, a staff report regarding a budget amendment for the Rose Theatre accessibility and efficiency upgrades. And the two closed session items listed on the agenda are added to the consent motion. In both cases, those items have public motions that arise from closed session direction, and those can be considered at the appropriate time in the agenda when we get to the closed session business.
Thank you very much, Mr. Clerk. I have a motion moved by Counselor Willins to approve the consent motion. As per our trial process agreed to by council, the consent motion will be subject to a recorded vote. Mr. Clerk, can you take the recorded vote, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. All in favor of the consent motion, please indicate Counselor Dillon.
In favor?
Counselor Singh?
Yes.
Counselor Fortini?
In favor?
Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Counselor Maderos?
Yes.
Counselor Paleshi?
Yes.
Counselor Willins?
Yes.
Counselor Visante?
Yes.
Counselor Santos?
Yes.
Mayor Brown? I believe Mayor Brown was present.
Did you hear me say yes, Peter?
Yeah, are you voting in favor, Mayor Brown?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. And Chair Bowman?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries 11 to zero.
Thank you very much, Mr. Clerk. We will now move on to announcements, 5.1. An announcement from Andrea Williams, Economic Development Coordinator, regarding the virtual launch of Beehive Brampton, May 2021. Mayor Brown is the council sponsor. Welcome, Andrea.
Thank you, Chair, Mr. Chair. Good morning, Mayor Brown and members of council. Oh, there we go. Perfect. Thank you. My name is Andrea Williams, Economic Development Coordinator, and I'm here today to talk about Brampton's newest addition to the Innovation District, the Beehive. Next slide, please.
Charlotte, I think you're at the end of the slides.
Oh, you are, yeah. Thanks. Perfect. The Beehive is a collaboration between the City of Brampton and the Toronto Business Development Centre. And I'm so excited to tell you that in less than a year since the first report was brought to council, staff were able to develop and implement a service providers agreement, create an appealing name and brand, install promotional exterior window decals, and designed furnished and fit up the space at 8 Nelson Street West. Located on the top floor, this co-working space in downtown Brampton will be a soft landing pad for international entrepreneurs and will coincide with the startup visa program offered by the federal government. Upon acceptance, these businesses will be granted permanent residency to Canada, along with a two-month virtual pre-acceleration program, followed by a six-month in-office incubation period, where they will be provided with the resources and support to ensure their success. With access to the top VCs, angel investors, consumers, and talent in the Canadian and US landscapes, they will have everything they need to scale here in Brampton. In addition, they will be given access to mentors to help them thrive in the Brampton community. Next slide, please. As most of you already know, Beehive officially launched last week on World Bee Day, so Thursday, May 20. Although I would love to take full credit for being that clever, it was completely serendipitous, but such a wonderful surprise. Despite the restrictions of COVID, the Beehive team was able to create a virtual launch, which showcased an interactive 3D tour of the space with Mayor Brown and Director of Economic Development Claire Barnett, along with an introductory video providing more insight of the program and services offered, which is now linked to their website, thebehive.ca. In addition, Mayor Brown, Counselors Visante and Maderos, Claire Barnett, and Ian Klugman, CEO of the Communitech, participated in an engaging fireside chat where they discussed how incubators play such an important role into the economic development, as well as Brampton's overarching economic recovery strategy. There was discussion about how partners like Brampton's Beehive positively impact startup ecosystem as a whole. And Mayor Brown spoke about the SDI mission in Hyderabad, India back in January of 2020, when they visited T-Hub, which fueled the idea of having our own soft landing pad here in Brampton. In the wake of the official launch, applications for Beehive are now being accepted, with a target to bring up to 40 entrepreneurs in 2021 and lay the foundation to make Beehive the incubator of choice so we can build a pipeline to continue to attract in the coming years. By 2022, staff expect to see up to 200 businesses buzzing in this beautiful new co-working space. The ultimate goal is to become the leading incubator in Canada for foreign startups looking to become a scalable business and empower newcomers to enter the North American market. It will also help establish the ecosystem in which local startups can be informed of the international perspective through peer-to-peer learning and mentorship. Brampton's Beehive will fill a gap within the Innovation District and will strategically target foreign investors who would be successful in the city. With Beehive as the newest member of the Innovation District, we are another step closer to creating an ecosystem where entrepreneurs can IDA companies and products, hire talent, raise capital, and scale their company all without leaving Brampton. More business investment in Brampton means more jobs and income for Brampton, and we expect to see this having such a positive impact on the city's economy as a whole. Bringing foreign entrepreneurs into downtown Brampton will directly impact the local community, will offer job creation, and a larger tax base. As one of Canada's youngest and fastest-growing cities, prioritizing innovation and technology and entrepreneurship is a key cornerstone in our economic recovery strategy. To accommodate expected population growth and develop the economic base to support it, the City of Brampton must continue to focus on new and innovative global industries and firms setting up in the city. With the addition of this soft landing pad in our space in the Innovation District in downtown Brampton, we are confident it will strengthen Brampton's message of being investment-ready. And not only will it showcase some of Brampton's best assets, but it will also position Brampton as a vital city for innovation with a rich, diverse pool of talent, making us even more appealing on a global scale. And a special thanks to the Economic Development Department, the Legal Department, Building Design and Construction Department, Strategic Communications, IT and Security, for their creativity, passion, and resilience to make this project happen. Beehive was born in the middle of a pandemic, and we are ready to help propel the economy forward. With yet another exciting partner in Brampton's Innovation District, we look forward to seeing what comes next for Beehive. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Andrea. Mayor Brown, you're the sponsor. Do you wish to speak?
Sure. I just want to say congratulations to Claire Barnett and her team and everyone in the different departments that adapted so quickly to make this happen. Literally, they put this together during a pandemic. And I can't wait when the startup visa program is operational again and we can start welcoming some of these businesses. And just to highlight, this is not a handout. Every one of these businesses are paying rent. This is part of the startup visa program, and so it's successful international companies that are coming here to invest, to hire local talent. And I know Claire and I have spoken often that this will be an opportunity to support local businesses. And if you haven't had the chance to visit this startup hub, I really believe that a year from now, it's going to be something that the DMZ or Velocity are jealous of because it really is something special with a beautiful view of downtown Brampton. And I can't wait to see some of the local amenities that will be brought in to service these companies. Everything from pretzels to popcorn. I know we've got some great local Brampton culinary delights that hopefully will now have a market with these new growing tech companies. So I'm really excited for what lies ahead. I just want to say to Claire, Jennifer, everyone involved, really well done.
Thank you very much. We have Counselor Maderos.
Thank you very much through you, Chair. Echoing the mayor in terms of all the great work staff have done. And it was great to see a collaboration of all the different departments. I confess, I didn't realize how many, you know, internal departments were involved in the process. So it's great to see everyone all hands on deck and, as the mayor said, producing something like this during a pandemic. You know, obviously, having been on the trade trip that we did to Lisbon regarding Web Summit, one of the things that was always a challenge is what was our value proposition in terms of with competing jurisdictions? And this really now puts us on even playing ground with other jurisdictions. And, you know, it's just, on a personal note, notwithstanding all the jobs that potentially it brings and the collaborations, you know, with the Rarson-led Innovation Zone, the Research Innovation Commercialization Centre, the Founder Institute, the Cybersecurity Accelerator, the Catalyst Cyber Range led by, you know, the Robert Cybersecurity Catalyst, Rarson's DMZ, the Brampton Board of Trade, the Downtown Brampton BIA. On a personal note, for someone who always, you know, born and raised in Brampton and always looked for, you know, international experiences and always wanted to go abroad, it's just really wild now to think that now we're going to get all this creativity and entrepreneurial spirit from people over the world coming to Brampton. And, you know, certainly, as the mayor suggested, the spillover effect, notwithstanding the creation of jobs and really focusing on their startup and innovation, is that a lot of the people that come, their profiles are looking for a vibe. They're bringing some, you know, a cool aspect to this. They bring some form of more internationalization of, you know, their culinary, for example, preferences, you know, different types of things. So that sort of spillover effect is really exciting to see how Brampton grows through this. So it's just fabulous, this type of initiative, and really looking forward to it. And I really hope that our youth especially understand that, you know, instead of, as I did when I was young, that they can look internally, they can look towards our downtown to find that sort of cool factor, to find innovation and leading-edge technology right here in downtown Brampton. So thank you for everyone involved in just a great, great initiative. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thanks again, Andrea. That moves, yeah, that moves us to Government Relations, 6.1. Blaine Lucas is here with a presentation for Committee on Government Relations Matters. Welcome, Blaine.
Thank you. Thank you through Chair Bowman. The presentation from the Public Affairs Team this week will review the issues at the regional, provincial, and federal levels of government with a potential impact on the City of Brampton. So if we could just move forward to the first slide, please. Slide number three. So I'll begin with a review of three agenda items on the Peel Regional Council meeting scheduled for May 27, tomorrow at 9:30. Good, perfect. So I'd like to start this week's presentation with item 11.1 on the Peel Regional Council Agenda. It's a staff presentation regarding the Peel Renewable Natural Gas Centre. Report on the matter was presented at the last Regional Waste Management Strategic Advisory Committee and summarized in the Government Relations Presentation of May 19. At the time, city staff pointed out that the source material for renewable natural gas produced by the facility is collected from all three municipalities, and benefits should be equally shared. City of Brampton staff continue to recommend advocacy at the regional level to ensure the lower-tier municipalities have input into the preferred use of the facility. We could move forth, forward onto the next slide, please. The next item is a recommendation report, item 16.4, for the Black North Initiative. The report responds to a June 11, 2020 Regional Council Resolution recognizing anti-black racism as a crisis within the region. The report recommends collaborating with the Black North Initiative to provide a framework to guide actions to address anti-black racism and strengthen the region's commitment to this important work. The Black North Initiative is led by a Canadian Council of Business Leaders Against Anti-Black Systemic Racism. It is a mission to end anti-black systemic racism throughout all aspects of life by using a business-first mandate. Black North started as an initiative to engage corporate Canada, but has expanded to call on nonprofit and public sector to make the same commitments to combat anti-black systemic racism. The Black North Initiative engages in nationwide outreach, and staff from the City of Brampton Equity Office are aligned with their work. The Equity Office staff will continue to engage and collaborate with the organization. And just on the regional agenda, there's also a delegation, item 7.1, that is also related to this report. We could move forward, please, onto slide five. I'd also like to highlight item 23.2, a motion regarding administrative monetary penalties. The motion is consistent with one of the recommendations in a staff report listed as item 11.2.5 on our City of Brampton agenda today. Some of our colleagues from the Public Works and Engineering and the Manager of Traffic Operations. It's suggesting that a letter be sent to the Ministry of Transportation to request the province consider utilization of the Administrative Monetary Penalty System to process automated speed enforcement violations, and that legislation amendments be made that would direct the revenue from the automated speed enforcement penalties back to the municipalities. We can move on to the next slide, please. If we could move on to the next slide, please. Last week, the province announced its roadmap to reopen. It's a three-step plan to reopen the province and gradually lift public health measures that were in place in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. As of May 22nd, 2021, outdoor recreation amenities have been permitted to open with outdoor limits for social gathering at five persons. The government expects to enter step one of the roadmap the week of June 14th. As we move forth onto slide seven, provides details of the three-step reopening plan, including the expected vaccination rate and the type of activities that will be permitted at each of the three steps. So the reopening is in part related to the percentage of the successful vaccinations in the province. If we could move forth onto slide eight, please. In federal developments, I wanted to flag an extension of the temporary travel measures restricting entry into Canada by foreign nationals until June 21st. This includes restricting all direct commercial and private passenger flights to Canada from India and Pakistan until June 21st. If we could move forward to the last slide. I just wanted to remind members of council that the 2021 Federation of Canadian Municipalities Virtual Conference starts on May 31st, which is next Monday, and the Public Affairs Team is finalizing the conference advocacy materials. All the supporting materials will be shared with members of council before the end of the week. So the advocacy items that will be included in that documentation is transit, higher-order transit, active transportation, climate change mitigation and adaptation, economic development and recovery, and infrastructure funding. The Public Affairs Team will be available to provide support throughout the conference and be able to support any of the members of council who participate during the course of that week. So this concludes my presentation for this week, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much. I see Counselor Maderos on the board.
Thank you through you, Chair. And this is indirect question, not so much to you, Lucas. It's more to, I don't know if we have our bylaw staff or even Parks and Rec staff. Over the long weekend, I received pics from residents, and I myself witnessed at El Dorado Park. And I know the intention, you know, we have always a good intention by council and by the city to open our amenities, open our park grounds. But the pictures I saw, it was just how crowded our playground structures were. I must have saw, for example, pictures from Chincouzi Park in the playground. I saw, for example, on fields, soccer fields, and so on. And, you know, and this is always one of those things. I think our intention is good, but sometimes there's, you know, unperceived or unprepared consequences. And it just seems, it was just a concentration of people which really, you know, it seemed like we were back in the normal days. And I don't know if maybe Parks and Rec staff can speak to, you know, how are, I guess we can't limit how many people go on the playground structures. It's just everyone was crawling over each other. Parents were all, everyone was such in a close proximity. I almost found it was counterproductive on one end, we're increasing our vaccines. On the other end, it just seems, you know, it was a hotbed for spreads. And I don't know if it's just distinct for our long weekend. This is just, again, I'm sure, and I remember when staff talked about it and our QP representatives had, you know, flagged in terms of especially the frontline workers who were at some of these parks dealing with these crowds. But, you know, and that was my first thought is, you know, staff is really in danger in some of these areas. And I don't know if there's any way that we can control some of this, or is this something? So as we open more amenities, I'm just, you know, concerned that on one end, we want to give everyone, you know, health and mental health and offer fresh air and play on the playgrounds. But on the other end, you know, indirectly, we're also promoting more spread. So I don't know if there's any way that we can control it, if that's been a thought. Any comment by staff, be it bylaw or Parks and Rec, if they have any sort of comment on what they found over, especially this long weekend.
Thank you through the chair. It's Commissioner Nader to the counselor. That is an issue that we've been dealing with internally and with our, with bylaw and BMO. Especially on the long weekends, people are encouraged to go outside and participate. We do have park ambassadors who go around, including with other work that bylaw has been doing, just to remind people of proper, the social distancing and the rules. We ask also not to, our park ambassadors, to engage too much with people also because tempers seem to be high lately around, you know, enforcement on telling people what they can't or shouldn't do. We also have signage around the parks to remind people about the social distancing and the COVID rules. So we're doing our best on the ground to remind people what the rules are and also at the same time keeping staff safe. I don't know if Commissioner Morrison is on the line to talk about bylaw and what they're doing on the ground in the parks.
I am on the line. Thank you, Marion. And through you, Mr. Chair, I can tell you, Counselor, that we, on these weekends, we have been very busy and we've been reacting to the calls for service through 311. Our ability to get to the parks has diminished because of that busyness. But we can look at maybe creating a new strategy or trying to get to the parks a little bit more and enforce. It takes more than one officer to do that type of work. So we'll partner with who we have to. Marion's group has been very good. We'll continue to work with them. We'll continue to work with corporate security and see if we can address this issue.
Thank you very much. And just one last question through the chair to Commissioner Nader. Just regarding, so we know it was a long weekend. Are we finding this to be a general pattern during weeknights or on weekends? Or is it just something that, you know, specific? Like I myself have noticed El Dorado and so on on just regular weekends. You know, it seems to have picked up over the last several weeks. And, but specifically around our playground structures, it's just, it's almost unbelievable. And I do know it's one of these, you know, it's a difficult thing to enforce or try to change behavior. And as much as, I guess, you know, if we see this pattern moving forward, I don't know if we want to sort of take a different approach because I think staff, you know, what I've heard right now is that we've heard staff are doing everything they can. But ultimately, based on, I guess, the numbers, I think we have to consider moving forward some other types of measures because it just, I was just blown by the lack of sort of regard for all the sort of COVID rules and everything that we're trying to promote in terms of safety. And it's just the parents and kids all together in the playground. It just, you know, we're not talking about like 10, 15 people. We're talking about like, you know, 50 to hundreds. And it was just very concerning. But is this a trend that you're noticing since we've opened up again on a nightly basis? Or is it more just on the weekends?
Through the chair to the counselor. Thank you, Blaine. It has been a trend, and I think just because it's nicer weather, it's gotten nicer weather earlier, more people again are going outside. There's COVID fatigue. Parents, you know, have their kids inside with the homeschooling, so they're just desperate to get out and have kids at the playground. So we are reminding everyone to follow the proper protocols and the rules. At the end of the day, it's, you know, we also have to keep staff safe, but we also do what we can with the signage and the park ambassadors and working with bylaw and BMO on what we can do. And I think it's a combination of a lot of things, but yes, it's definitely been a trend and we notice, and we do try to enhance our services and staff on the weekends because we know more people are going outside and they're just desperate to, you know, for this to be over, as we all are. But really, I think there's a lot of COVID fatigue going out there. But we are, I'm happy also to work with Paul Morrison and the team to see if we can find other ways to, you know, remind people or do things in a safe manner so people can still enjoy the outdoors, but at the same time do it safely.
Yeah, thank you very much. And just, I would just ask that you, you know, bring any, bring to council if there seems to be a continuing trend where there's that amount of people and we might want to, I'm not sure, control lines gated a little bit and try to control how many people maximum inside. I know we don't want to get to that point, but it's just, you know, we'll see how the numbers go, and we are in a downward trend, but just as a consideration. But thank you to all the staff who are, you know, essentially putting their safety at risk just to ensure that these parks are running smoothly and especially to those ambassadors or frontline staff. So thank you very much, Commissioners, both of them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor Maderos. We sort of bordered on COVID and the provincial guidelines, so that's okay. And next up, we have Counselor Santos.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Just a quick question for FCM this year. We normally have delegations to various ministers. Will that be happening again this year, Blaine?
Through the chair to the counselor. So this year, for FCM, there is no delegations. We just have the advocacy items that we will be presenting.
Okay, thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Seeing no further questions, I have a motion moved by Counselor Santos.
Mr. Chair, I'm on it.
Oh, okay. I don't see you, Counselor Vicente, but please go ahead.
Sorry, I think I, it wasn't to all, so my apologies for that. Thank you, Chair. Counselor Santos, thanks for bringing up FCM and AEMO. And in this term of council, I know that all members have been quite active in participating with regards to a mandate that we established early on in the term, which was for staff and council to do a lot more in terms of preparing shovel-ready projects and advocating for funding to help pay for them, which of course, every dollar brought in from a higher-tier government is $1 that doesn't need to be spent by, directed by taxpayers here in Brampton. And, you know, we've kind of developed a tradition. I know Mayor Brown, at each of these funding announcements, when they're brought forward by either the province or by the federal government, it's almost become a, almost Monday, every other Monday morning where we have a funding announcement here in the city of Brampton. And I think that these are very significant contributions being made by the province and by the federal government for the city of Brampton. And I think what we would be helpful to see, and Mr. Clerk, perhaps if you could just take note, because I'd like to move, that we get this information. It would be helpful for residents in the city to know and understand within the context of a report that details all of the funding announcements that we've had from the province or from the federal governments. I'm not sure if there were regional contributions as well, but I'll leave that to staff to figure out. But within the context of a single report, all the funding announcements that we have had, all of the contributions that have come in from the provincial, federal governments for projects and other initiatives held here or happening here in the city of Brampton, if we could get that report. And also, I think it would be good to have an update around this time next year as well to wrap up the term. Would that be possible, Blaine?
Of course. So through the chair to the counselor. Yes, sir. So we've, our team has been chatting over the last couple of days to create a report to council around the volume of grant funding that has been secured over the last several years in comparison to the last 12 months. So we are planning to bring that forward. And we also want to compare the increase in sponsorship in addition to grants so we can demonstrate to members of council on both, for both opportunities and both business units. We're doing our very best to bring in money to the municipality to support our community and our residents. So yes, of course, we can bring that forward. And the preliminary numbers that we've put together does show that there's been a significant increase in the amount of grant funding that we've been able to secure. And, you know, I'd just like to recognize and thank members of council for the incredible support that we receive when it comes to advocacy. And, you know, when you reach out to other levels of government, incredibly, it's incredibly helpful to us, and it's also very important for us to be successful in some of these grants. We will bring forward a report that outlines and compares our grant funding. And we can also bring forth a comparison with our revenue generation from sponsorship as well to demonstrate to members of council the success of our program. So thank you for that opportunity. We'll bring that forward.
Well, thank you, Blaine. And just to be clear, can that be cumulative for this term? And if we have this report again next year around this time, can that be again a cumulative report showing a total?
Yeah, of course. What we're trying to do, and I do apologize to members of council for it's not as, the change in our GRM presentations hasn't been as quick as what we would hope. But what we do want to show is regular updates on the success of our projects, the success of our grant fundings, fundings, like some providing data and statistical analysis to show you what applications are in the process, which ones are waiting results for, and then which ones we're successful at. So we want to make sure that you have access to that information on a regular basis because the more opportunities and the more information that you have, the greater potential that you have when you're talking to your colleagues at the regional and federal and provincial level to advocate on behalf of the citizens of Brampton. So we're working very hard to make sure we make that information readily available. But we will start with a cumulative report to council. So just the last thing I'd like to say, sir, is I'd just like to thank Andre Houghman and Tara Hunter for the work they've been putting into this week and putting all the information together. So I do appreciate their hard work. So thank you, sir.
And thank you, Blaine. And thanks to members of the committee for, I hope we can have this information out for us to see and for residents to see as well. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. We have Counselor Maderos back on the board.
Thank you through you, Chair. Just in correlation to Counselor Vicente's request, and thank you for bringing the request. If you can also, Blaine, can you correlate the funding announcement with the application or when the application was put in? So we can see if there is a trend in how many years it took for one level of government or other to make that funding announcement, to understand also, because it is timely with elections coming, to sort of understand when these announcements were made, where they followed through, how much money was put towards it. So basically, if we've had a funding announcement, for example, with Riverwalk, and we know the application went in, I don't know, seven, eight years ago or five years ago, or, you know, so it'd be great to correlate with what the initiative is and when the announcement was. So I appreciate that information as part of the report coming back. Thank you.
Through Chair Bowman to the council, yes, we will include that as well. And I also just wanted to let you know, council materials. I certainly have not forgot about the changes to the reporting structure and making sure that you have access to information readily. What our plan is overall, which I'm very, I'm hoping, and I know we will get there, is creating a statistical database around grant funding and sponsorships that you'd have open access to information as you needed it to show the status of that. So I'm a big proponent of statistics and data, and we'll do our very best to put that together for you, sir.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I don't see anybody else on the board. So, Mr. Clerk, can we move the presentation and the motion by Counselor Vicente at the same time?
Yes, you can, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Counsel, you have the motion there by Counselor Vicente. And we will receive the presentation. Anybody opposed? Seeing none, that moves. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
We will now go on to 6.2, an update on the COVID-19 emergency. Mayor Brown has been providing regular weekly updates to council or committee, and I would like to invite the mayor to provide an update to committee today. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Bowman, and happy to give a COVID-19 update. We're making great progress in Peel region. First, I want to talk about vaccines. We have now passed the 1 million vaccine threshold in Peel region, and we are on the precipice of hitting 70% of adults vaccinated over the age of 18. I think we're at 69.2 today. So those are big numbers and we've made real progress. The hotspot strategy paid dividends in the sense that our case counts are going down by vaccinating our essential workplaces, getting the general public vaccinated, it's made a remarkable difference. But we still have some work to do. As the number gets higher, we'll start to find out where there's going to be challenges with potential vaccine hesitancy. They always say that once you look at what happened in the States and the UK, once you reach a certain level, that's where you face the pushback. But I am encouraged with these numbers and it's a very positive sign. You know, yesterday, Ontario's COVID numbers were down to 1,000, I think the lowest point in several, in several months, and so we just need to keep this progress up. I would share with council, though, that the COVID-19 hotspot strategy is over as of May 17th, which means for the first few weeks of May, we were getting double our allocation of vaccines. That will no longer be the case for the next five to six weeks, which I share with some trepidation because we made such progress. I don't like the idea of taking our foot off the pedal. For the next five weeks, we will be getting a 9% allocation in Peel and our population's 11%. And so one of the reasons it was, we made such progress in the last few weeks is we were getting a 19% allocation. So Peel Public Health is going to have to slow down some of its clinics, change some of the hours, reduce some of the allocations. So the progress and the success comes with the caveat that we're not going to have the same supply that we had before during the big push in early May. On an outdoor amenities front, we made some progress there too. As you know, I've been very vocal in the media about the importance of lifting outdoor restrictions. The Ontario Science Table, our top doctors in Peel region, our top infectious disease doctor, all said that outdoor amenities are low-risk and safe and that negative effects of having them closed were worse than any potential minimal risk of having them open. And finally, the science was listened to, the medical advice was listened to, and the province lifted many of the restrictions on the weekend. And I want to thank Maryall and her team because they had everything ready to go. So when we got the green light, there was no, some cities took a few days. I saw updates from other cities where they said, you know, it would take a week to get the fields or the splash pads open. That was not the case in Brampton. They were opened immediately. And so thank you to our top-notch Parks and Recreation staff who adapted so quickly. I do believe it doesn't go far enough, though. I am concerned that there's other outdoor sports that the Science Table has said is low-risk that still are not open. Outdoor pools are not open. Cricket, a very popular sport in Brampton, is not open, and the list, baseball. And so we have to continue that push and I hope that we will see those outdoor amenities open soon. The province's reopening framework is cautious and slow and it's linked to province-wide vaccination numbers. And so we're still, we still have some time to go before we start to get back to normal. I continue speaking to the provincial leaders based on the advice I'm getting from our local physicians. Outdoor patios, in my opinion, should be open because they're considered low-risk and there are other minor adjustments like that that I believe there should be some movement on. Having said that, we are seeing progress and I shared this update with you, although there are some imperfections, I share with you this update that I am optimistic that we've seen progress and I believe there are better days ahead. I think for the first time in the pandemic, it looks like there are sunny skies ahead, not the same bleak picture that we might have been seeing six months ago when we were heading into a winter with vaccine shortages. I think for the first time, there's a reason for real optimism in Brampton. And on that note, I'm happy to take any questions from councillors.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Counselor Plessey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Mayor, I guess as of today, the Ministry of Health announced over 100 locations for second dose throughout Ontario. And once again, like their first announcements for doses coming out of pharmacies, Brampton was left off of lists. I've gone to their website and looked through all of the Brampton locations, no second doses are being offered. When you go to Toronto, Kingston, and a number of other municipalities, second doses are being offered. I guess like the first time they did this to us, we got on the horn and started making a big stink. So I think that, given that this announcement was just today, maybe a heads up to say that it's time to do that again. Have you heard any word or have any comments?
So are you referring to the AstraZeneca second doses?
I think it's the AstraZeneca second doses. Those are the only ones I see.
Yeah, so the AstraZeneca second doses are going to expire on June 31st and there has to be a 12-week interval. And so they've made a decision to offer them, offer those to people that got their COVID-19 AstraZeneca vaccine in the, in the first few weeks of March. And there'll be pharmacies in Brampton that provide those as well. And so I'm told that we're part of that list, but I would say Dr. Lowe has shared with Mayor Thompson, Mayor Crombie and myself that we really do need to push for a second dose strategy because we have hundreds of thousands of seniors who are ready and eager to get their second doses. But I believe the position of the province right now is that they want to get the entire province their first dose before they move to second doses, but it's something that we're, we're, the Dr. Lowe, Dr. Mohammed and Michelle Emanuel from Trillium are in constant conversation with the province because we would love to be able to operationalize second doses today, if, 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 if given the green light. I don't think the AstraZeneca second doses are really a significant announcement because they're in such small numbers. The Romanian allotment that Ontario has, it's for a very small segment of the population. But for those who did fall into that cohort, you will be able to get them at a Brampton pharmacy as well.
So that's not, that's not what their website is saying. Their website is saying that no Brampton pharmacies are handing out the AstraZeneca second doses. Out of 162 pharmacies in Ontario, not one is in Brampton.
Okay, so we'll have to double-check that with, with Dr. Lowe. My understanding is that they continue to get an allocation directly, not from Peel Public Health, but directly from the province, but we can double-check that with him. And if, if that's, if it's the case that our pharmacies are not getting it, I think it would be appropriate for us to do a motion at Regional Council to that effect in regards to these AstraZeneca doses.
For sure. Okay. The next comment that I had is with the new phasing framework that the province has put out, it's, it's borderline, I guess, forced vaccination in terms of, so many people need to be vaccinated before we open up. And I'm in full support of people getting vaccinated. I myself got vaccinated, but that's my concern when you put a number of vaccinations to the opening.
So that is the decision of the provincial government to tie the reopening to vaccinations. I believe they want to tie it to our ability to get to, they want to encourage the public to help us get to herd immunity so that we're not in this never-ending cycle of dealing with different COVID waves. And so it is important that even those, you know, who are hesitant, understand that this is in the best interest of, of, of the community to not have the virus bouncing around. And it is important that everyone supports this effort. It doesn't need to be 100%, but I believe the goal is to have over 75% in order to get to that herd immunity.
No, and I don't disagree. I just think it borderlines taking people's right to choose away from them, which I think we're all opposed to doing. But thank you for the update. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're very welcome, sir. Seeing no other questions, I have a motion moved by Counselor Plessey to receive this update. Is there anyone opposed to this motion? Otherwise, your vote will be counted in the affirmative. Seeing or hearing no objections, the motion carries. Next item is 7.1, delegations. We have delegation, excuse me, oh, sorry.
I was going to give an update on the COVID, I believe, on the garden.
Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Willens. Yes, you were. Please go ahead.
That's okay through you, Chair. Thank you very much. I just want to give a quick update on the Backyard Garden program. It launched another successful growing season this year with 2,000 new participants. We now have 14,500 residents signed up for our monthly newsletter. In addition to our major sponsors, we have three local businesses, two of them which were garden centers that offered to participants discounted, which drew people into their stores and supported their local businesses. One of them was a organic fertilizer, the other third was an organic fertilizer supplier. Two of them was two and six and one was in wards three and four, so that's encouraging. It's across the city now. I would also like to thank the park staff and the staff at Chincusi Park. They were exceptional this year once again, especially Jake Bowman. He's no related, no relations to Counselor Bowman. He actually lives in wards two. They had outstanding support. I was able to grow probably close to 1,000 plants and they were very supportive on bringing them and tending those plants until they were given out to the gardens and to give the out. All plants have been all picked up by the community gardens and the fire stations. The fire stations didn't do as many this year because they had some issues, but the ones that are doing it have loaded up with double flats, so they'll be growing lots for the food banks. So we'll have an update on the food bank information at a later date. So thank you very much and thank you, Mayor Brown, for your continued support on this. I know you mentioned it quite a bit when you were up and about. Thanks.
Thank you very much for the update, Counselor Willens. So I guess Counselor Plessey, you'll move receipt of Mayor Brown's presentation and Counselor Willens' presentation. Any objections? Seeing none, that carries. Thank you very much. Now we will move on to 7.1, delegations regarding increasing the capacity of Brampton's vaccination sites. Our delegations today include Usha Srivasan, Joelle Almeda, and Nikita Mahajan. Each of you will have up to five minutes to address the committee. Welcome.
Thank you very much, everyone. Oh, sorry, Usha.
Hello, Joella. I'm just going to have a quick introduction and then I'll pass it on to you. Good morning, Mayor Brown and council members. First, happy birthday to you, Mayor. Introducing myself, I'm Director of the Ryerson Venture Zone. I have had the opportunity to speak with most of the council members when I first joined this position in last July. And just as a reminder, we are in the brand-new incubator in the city of Brampton, bringing the knowledge and capabilities of building startup ecosystems from Ryerson University, from DMZ and the Zone Learning to the city of Brampton. Our mandate is to work with the community and industries of the city of Brampton and create jobs there. And so I'm happy to say that in a very short period of time, in nine months, we've had some great success and we are sharing one of them with you here today. We launched in September of last year in the community health and wellness sector and working with the top industry partners in the community like DynaCare, William Oster Health System, St. Elizabeth Health and Medtronic. We, in a competitive process, received over 50 startup applications and we were able to select top 10 companies that are working with us right now in the incubator that represent 25 founders and over 60 employees. And 90% of these people are from the city of Brampton, so we're creating jobs right there in the city. And we are also very pleased to be physically located, hopefully post-COVID, at One Nelson opposite to the Beehive and we look forward to working with rest of the community there. In the incubator, companies like Medesis, that you will hear from shortly, receive advice and 20K in grant as part of their funding and connect them to network so that they can be market-ready and able to sell into the ecosystem. So thank you again for your continued support of the Ryerson Venture Zone. In September of this year, we will be adding another sector in the area of smart city, mobility of goods and logistics, and we will, you'll hear more from us on that. But I will leave for Medesis CEO, Joella, to introduce herself and Nikita and present to you what Medesis does and very relevant for the topics you're discussing this morning. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. I'm actually going to pass the mic over to Nikita, who's our Clinical Associate Advisor. This is a topic that's very near and dear to us. It's something we're working on actively. In the first quarter of the season, we worked with the RIC Center and the Digital Main Street Lab project, and we actually set up 37 pharmacies in the Peel region, getting them ready to vaccinate their populations. So I'm going to let Nikita take it away.
Nikita, you can unmute your mic to address committee.
Oh, perfect. Thank you, Joella. If we could just change it to the next slide, please? Oh, no, just the one before that. Okay, sorry, we could just go back to the first slide. Okay, thank you, everyone. My name is Nikki and I'm here on behalf of Medesis. And we're here as members of the first cohort of Ryerson's Venture Zone in Brampton, who has been instrumental in supporting our startup to ensure that we have continued success in our efforts. Every week, they've brought in valuable founders and key stakeholder advisors from the Brampton community, and we credit their work on bringing the community together to help support growing startups like us. This continued success supports us after having worked with Digital Main Street Labs at the RIC Center in the first quarter of 2021, and they're also helping us set the foundation for our headquarters in Brampton. So Medesis is a healthcare technology company that is situated right here in Brampton, and I myself have grown up in Brampton. I went to Notre Dame Secondary School and I continue to be a proud resident. In fact, Rowena Santos is actually my city councillor, so pretty surreal moment. Medesis is changing how large-scale health initiatives such as COVID-19 vaccines can be adapted to meet the requirements of local communities right here in the city, in addition to hundreds of pharmacies across Canada. Next slide, please. So most of our pharmacies are independently owned mom-and-pop pharmacies with limited resources. With Medesis, through our platform, we bridge those gaps with technology and enable them to manage all the complexities of the rollout seamlessly. Through Medesis, pharmacies are able to triage patients by their age, data registration, location, to prioritize those living within their communities such as Brampton, whether or not they have received their first dose elsewhere, and more. We recognize that Brampton is home to a diverse population, and in order to overcome any potential language barriers, patients have the option to register in a variety of different languages such as Hindi, Punjabi, and Sun Urdu. We also have features that help pharmacies manage patients who don't feel comfortable using technology. Next slide, please. So yesterday, we had about 1,039 COVID-19 cases in Ontario, and a large portion of this is due to the lockdown and 52% of the population having received their first dose. But now the challenge lies in having to ensure that they come back for their second dose. And through our work with community pharmacies, and as COVID-19 vaccine supply issues and vaccine administration picks up, people have recently begun to ask, how much longer is this pandemic going to last? However, in order to achieve this herd immunity, we must combat vaccine hesitancy. And I'm so glad that you mentioned this earlier, Mayor Brown, because this is something that we believe that we can actually work on together. So hesitancy is defined as when you have a vaccine available and people choose not to take it. And we've already seen this hesitancy being played in our neighboring partner in the United States, whose rollout has really served as a forecast for ours. The supply of the vaccine... The supply of the vaccine has started to outpace the demand in Philadelphia and other cities across the US, despite only thirty percent of the population being fully vaccinated. Here in Canada, it is four percent. With the US vaccine rollout being two to three months ahead of us, it is crucial that we anticipate these challenges to tackle these problems ahead of time. Next slide, please. So our previous projects entail building customized solutions to organize and perform virtual consultations for cervical cancer vaccines and HIV. We want to repurpose this system to enable residents of Brampton to book a one-on-one consultation with their local independent pharmacists for free. Next slide, please. So this is how that would work. Our platform allows patients to use our centralized website, BookMyShot.com, to look up which one of our pharmacies in their local community are providing, in this case, vaccine consultations. Patients are able to easily filter by language requirements to identify pharmacists who speak their language. Register, and upon registration, they are prompted with the option to select pre-populated, commonly asked questions or customize their own individual questions in a comment box. Pharmacists are able to better prepare ahead of time. Sorry. Pharmacists are able to better prepare ahead of time using our provided educational resources to tailor their counseling to the patient's concern. Ultimately, this one-on-one counseling from a pharmacist in their local community who speaks their language, which can be done either via phone call or Zoom, is what's gonna tackle vaccine hesitancy. This personalized level of care is starkly different from what is being received at mass vaccine sites. And this is how we increase the number of patients vaccinated required to open up our economy. Next slide, please. So another initiative that we want to tackle is rapid testing. The Ontario government now offers test kits for businesses to conduct rapid testing. However, not all businesses or individuals have the capacity or just knowledge to implement rapid testing properly. As a small business owner, there's no guarantee that I'm going to be receiving these kits. And if I do, there's no concrete guidance or instructions on how to actually implement testing. For Brampton small businesses, we see community pharmacies as the ideal solution to this gap. Next slide, please. Through our platform, your small business hairdresser or family-owned restaurant has the option of having their employees be tested at their local pharmacy within the same plaza, two stores down prior to their shift, which allows us to catch outbreaks early. This is how we get our economy back sooner, catch outbreaks faster, and continue to keep the economy open. Small businesses will be able to partner with their local independent pharmacies so that pharmacists can conduct rapid testing accurately and ensure accountability. To put things in perspective, there's about three thousand independent pharmacies compared to only eight hundred large chains in Ontario. As small businesses themselves, independent pharmacies are in an ideal position to provide that personalized form of care and build those relationships to ensure continuity. Pharmacies can ensure handling, storage, and accurate reporting of positive screenings to public health so that it can be confirmed with laboratory testing right there at the pharmacy itself or through public health. The same system can be applied for customers entering a small business, in addition to the general public, so that pharmacies can serve as healthcare hubs within their community. In fact, in Nova Scotia, rapid testing sites are already open to the public, and ten percent of cases are being detected through this initiative. Once the federal supply has been used, we can ensure continuity of care for small businesses and the general public through pharmacies. For large businesses, we can actually have the pharmacist perform testing right there at the business site itself on a regular basis. Next slide, please. We're working hard to have both vaccine hesitancy consultations and rapid testing available in June-July. If there are any organizations that are interested in tackling vaccine hesitancy, or if you know of any businesses, small or large, that want to be paired with a local pharmacy for rapid testing, please contact us. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Usha, Joella, and Nikita. Um I see Counselor Santos on the board.
Thank you so much. And through, um, Mr. Chair, thank you to all of you for coming to delegate and share this information um with us. Um I think it's always fantastic when when young women like yourselves come to council to delegate uh and to delegate your projects, your ideas, and your innovations. Uh so congratulations on that. Um I guess I'm wondering, and maybe this is a question um uh for yourselves, but also to our staff in economic development, to Claire specifically. Um what is your outreach strategy right now to kind of um get this uh this product, this innovation um into the awareness of the businesses throughout Brampton in particular? Um and then also, I guess, to Claire, is there, is like, how can we communicate this out uh on our list uh to through economic development?
Sure, I can answer that question. Um so we've been around for about two years, and currently we are the partner of choice of the Ontario Pharmacists Association, which is the pharmacist association for pharmacy representative, representation uh all across Ontario. We're also working with one of the biggest national chain providers aside from Shoppers, which is called Pharma Choice and RX Health Med. They have about nine hundred stores countrywide. So we've been doing this since last year. We, you know, ran this campaign through the pandemic. Um we had pharmacies using us for the flu, the flu shot. And uh right now pharmacies across Canada are using us for COVID testing and COVID nineteen vaccines. So we are working with pharmacies from, you know, the the chain side, the banner side, and that's most of our outreach till date. Um other than that, I think what would be helpful is a coordinated effort, I would say, uh, you know, working with Brampton so that Brampton farm, Brampton stores know about this. Because with all of everything that's going on with the pandemic, i- it's hard to sort of cut through some of the noise, though our existing partnerships are also helping us a lot.
Excellent, and I and I'm happy to send this information as well over to the BIA, the Business Improvement Area for the downtown. And and um I guess through you, Mr. Chair, to to Claire, is there opportunity here to kind of pass this through our list of businesses from ECA?
Good morning. Thank you for that question, Counselor. We've been um uh sharing this information. Um and in fact, all of the companies who have been created um and have graduated uh through Usha's program at the Ryerson Venture Zone, we promote all of those businesses through uh social media primarily. But also Devon from our team works closely with most of the businesses to um help with their own business development. So that's that's one avenue. The other one is um economic development has recently taken on um rapid testing and getting that out to small businesses. Um and uh we've been working with the province of Ontario and our BMO colleagues. That will be rolled out, uh we hope, um this week, if not early next week, for small businesses. And this is something that we can certainly share on the website that's being created, that this is also another option for them, so we can share that information that way.
That's awesome. Thank you so much, and thank you to all of you for coming to delegate today.
Thank you, everyone, for having us.
For the opportunity.
Thank you very much. I see no further questions. Um oh, we will uh move on. Uh there are no other questions. Perhaps some of you noticed that uh City Clerk has been listing uh question for delegation clarification, questions for staff clarification and request to speak. And that will be done for each of the uh delegates, so that we can keep the the questions straight for the members or for for staff. I have a motion moved by Counselor Santos to receive the delegations. All in favor? None opposed? That motion carries. Thank you very much. Uh we now move on to item seven point two, a delegation from Halim McKell, owner and co-founder Lollaboo Nursery and Childcare Centre regarding a youth apprenticeship program. Welcome, Halim.
Thank you very much. So I wanted to take some time to introduce council and everybody listening to a program that we are launching in um across our locations. Um next slide, please. So a high school student apprenticeship program and sponsorship program that has been initiated by Lollaboo. Um as part of our empowering our community and high school students who are eighteen years of age, they can apply for a Lollabooian excellent award, open yearly from November to uh July. And what does each placement get? So each placement will get a successful candidate an opportunity to pursue a degree while working at the same time. And we thought of this idea as an excellent way to reward students who look for a little more certainty while they are uh looking forward to their professional careers. So this is not just an opportunity for landing employment, it's an opportunity to participate in a professionally progressive career as they um look for something that fits their aspirations. We've seen many, or we've seen a dozen graduates from apprenticeship programs graduate over these years. So this is a partnership with the Ministry of Training um at Ministry of Labor Training and Skills Development of Ontario. And we've had many graduates over the years come through Lollaboo and be graduated as a get their diploma and graduate as a registered ECE. And we thought, well, why can't we do this for high school students as well? Being a high school student that graduated from Thomas Aquinas in Brampton, um we thought this would be a great opportunity to share with everybody and to where raise awareness for this program. The benefits of this is that they can get right into the workforce right after graduation, and they can earn their degree while they're working. So we thought this would be a great opportunity to um share with council and to share with everybody watching in order to raise awareness and to give back to the community in this manner. Next slide, please. So some other items that Lollaboo does um in order to give back to the community, um in addition to the apprenticeship program, is um a sick kids fundraising program that we have done for the past twelve years. And Lollaboo has raised over a, or wishes to raise a quarter million dollars by the end of this campaign. And we do this through various initiatives that uh various initiatives the month of May and throughout the the calendar year. One of those initiatives include providing a hundred percent of our registration fees to the Sick Kids Foundation. Um there are crib-side pickups of our menu, uh which is specific to this year's campaign. This year, we also thought of um providing incentive to all of our frontline staff that a hundred dollar donation is provided for every staff that receives their vaccination in the month of May. So through these initiatives and through the empowerment of our community, we plan to reaching our goal of a quarter million dollar donation to the Sick Kids Foundation. Next slide, please. So currently, Lollaboo has two campuses in Brampton. Uh we service over four hundred employees, uh four hundred families in the city and employ over sixty staff within the city of Brampton. And two of those locations are our financial drive center and our current flagship location at fourteen fifty Queen Street at um Queen Incredio. We've operated at Brampton since two thousand and fifteen and have operated, will be operating eleven locations across the GTA um by the end of this year. Next slide, please. So one of the biggest accomplishments that I'd also like to share with you today is our new flagship location at Wallace and Minkoffin Drive in Brampton. We've uh received our permits and hope to start construction any day now. This is going to be one of the largest childcare centers in Canada, close service, three hundred and sixty-five children and a space with over sixty staff at this location. It is a ten million dollar investment in the city of Brampton, and we're proud to be bringing this type of innovation and this type of facility to the community of Brampton. Next slide, please. So lastly, I'll share a couple of things about about us that I haven't been able to say already. So we've, we're founded in two thousand and eight by myself and Irene McHale. We are one hundred percent Ontario-owned and operated. Um as a professional accountant by trade and really as a professional engineer, we saw that professionalism was something that needed to be added to the industry. It was not only providing a atmosphere and a place for children to thrive and for children to grow, but it was also to provide comfort for parents in order to leave their children somewhere that they're comfortable with, that they can still go to work without feeling the anxiousness of leaving their children with somebody else. State-of-the-art facilities were a must. Childcare should not be a real estate affront. Lollaboo also operated emergency childcare in the two thousand and twenty pandemic or the ongoing pandemic. We operate emergency childcare in Brampton, in Mississauga, and in Vaughan. But we continue to strive to be pioneers in the facility and real estate innovation for childcare in Ontario. We currently service fifteen hundred families across Ontario, including the four hundred in Brampton. And we number about three hundred staff, Lollabooians, as we like to call ourselves, and sixty in Brampton.
Hi, Halim. I hate to interrupt, but you're uh you've gone past your five minutes, so would you like to wrap it up?
No, I was just about to say thank you and open up to questions.
Excellent timing. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Um we have uh any questions for the delegation? I don't see any. Is there any questions for staff?
Sorry, Mr. Chair, I'm on for question of the delegation.
Oh, okay. Uh sorry, Counselor Plessey, I didn't see you there. Go right ahead, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Halim. Uh nice to see you here. Thanks so much for for delegating to us. Um I I have to say that uh everything that you're there, you're doing for Brampton is, has been fantastic. Your business, your uh the story, the investment uh that you've that you've put back into Brampton is uh is significant. And congratulations. And we we truly do thank you so much for this investment. Um just a question, um because uh um many, many, many surveys that are currently out there uh clearly state that in in women have been impacted more than men um during during this uh crisis that we're in. Uh many have lost their jobs um while running a a household. And and you you have identified a gap in in the support of women by default families in our community to get through this and reduce discrepancies as a local business owner uh that wants to give back. How do you anticipate doing this?
Um thank you for the kind words and the acknowledgement, Counselor. Um definitely that um is 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 there. And I think um as we continue to um provide access to quality childcare, um that's going to be going to be key. I think important thing is to continue building capacity in the system, to continue to make it accessible to families um and continue to create that environment where you're comfortable. I think um not only to um allow women to get back into the workforce, but also as a foundation to our economic recovery. I think um parents have to feel comfortable. They have to be able to um drop off their children in a, an environment that they're, they feel safe, in an environment that um allows them to go to work without feeling that guilt, without feeling hesitancy. Um they've been home with their children for some time now, and and leaving them with somebody is is going to be a challenge. And um we have to be patient with parents. We have to be um open with them. Allow them to explore the site as much as possible, allow them to um introduce and to see the staff members who are going to be taking care of their children, and allow them to get comfortable with the uh with the program so that um they can return to the workforce and they can be confident to return to the workforce. Um so that economic recovery and um so that uh women can enter into the workforce over the next um or the, over the next period of time.
Thank you so much for that. Thank you for the the apprenticeship program. We we really look forward to uh to the construction start in uh in Ward Two for the uh one of the biggest nurseries in Canada. I can't wait uh to to see that underway. Please tell Irene I said hello and congratulations. Thanks again for being here.
Thank you. Happy birthday, Counselor.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I see no further questions. I have a motion moved by Counselor Plessey to receive the delegation. Is there anyone opposed to this motion? Otherwise, your vote will be counted in the affirmative. Seeing none, there are no objections, so the motion carries. Thank you very much. We move on. Next item is seven point three, a delegation from uh Vijay Thomas, President Indo-Canada Chamber of Commerce ICC regarding the relationship with Brampton and the impact of COVID nineteen on India. Welcome, Vijay.
Thank you very much. Good morning, councillors, and good morning, uh Mayor Brown, and a very happy birthday to you. Um it it is um an honor to be presenting um to to all of you. And thank you for 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 giving me the opportunity on behalf of the Indo-Canada Chamber of Commerce. And one of your insiders, uh you know, there is a lot of Brampton insiders at the Indo-Canada Chamber of Commerce. Um Mr. Jash Menon from the Economic Development uh of of Brampton, uh you know, to talk to, talk to us about of delegating. We had no idea that this this was possible. And and thanks to him, uh we we're here. And um I I'd like to give a uh next slide, please, a big, a little background about the Indo-Canada Chamber of Commerce. Some of you probably already know of us. Um we've been established in nineteen seventy seven, so we're forty four years old. Um our objective is to foster trade between Canada and India and create opportunities for Canadian business to explore the Indian market. And vice versa. So some of the stuff that I was hearing about Beehive. And and riots and few uh you know, the the startups, all of that is relevant and we'll we'll get to uh it quickly. So we want to foster bilateral relations, bilateral trade between India and Canada. And especially, I think Brampton, given the fact that, you know, we we have a lot of um our members are from Brampton. And 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 I when I said insiders, I truly believe we have a lot of um people uh from Brampton that that really are are within within the chamber. And we can work very closely. So we work with Indo-Canadian leaders and and we hope we can we can take the Brampton story to India and and vice versa. Next slide, please. So I triple C and Brampton ties, we have really strong enduring and and interdependent ties. As as you said, we've been, you know, more than two decades, we've been, we've been, you know, working together. The majority of the I triple C, the biggest membership group is from Brampton. Um also, uh the biggest, um you know, on our board of directors, the the most number of our our board members are also from Brampton. And um Mayor Patrick Brown uh has accompanied us on on many of our India missions. And um you know, I think um the Mayor Brown, you I I I forget the number, but I think it's more than twenty or closer to twenty, the number of trips that he's made to India. And I think many of them were were with uh with uh in some way or shape connected to Indo-Canada Chamber of Commerce. And uh the I triple C and the Brampton's Economic Development Department collaborated with our trade delegations since twenty twelve. Next slide, please. So on behalf of the Indo-Canada Chamber of Commerce, on behalf of all Indo-Canadians and the Indian nation, I'd like to really thank. Uh Brampton for for your solidarity and support to the Indian nation. Uh with the Brampton clock tower lighter than the Indian tricolor. So we really, really appreciate this this noble gesture. And and um you know, I I like to say that, you know, you know, the people in India definitely, you know, uh stand with Brampton. Anytime Brampton would would need any assistance. So, you know, thank you very much. Next slide, please. So eh from a timing perspective, you know, as as Brampton changed the lights, you know, we at the Indo-Canada Chamber of Commerce uh started a. Um uh fun marathon fundraising event of four Sundays. Um two Sundays back was our first Sunday and we had political leaders from coast to coast. We tied up with eighty two other Indo-Canadian organizations and we wanted to build, do two things, raise awareness. About the situation in India and number two, raise um raise resources to help, you know, kind of uh. Uh you know, send oxygen to India and and we had um uh you know, not just Mayor Patrick Brown, but there's some of the other G T A mayors. As well as um the the Premier Doug Ford and at our event, uh Premier Doug Ford announced two thousand more ventilators. To India. So in a way, our creation of awareness seemed to have worked. We we had the Deputy Premier of Manitoba and and a bunch of different other leaders across Canada. We even had the Meaty Federation from Manitoba uh and and they made a donation to 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 uh for Oxygen for India. So that that's worked and 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 the India story, uh we're we're targeting tier two, tier three cities in India and rural India. Now, the cities, the bigger cities are are getting better, but tier two, tier three cities and rural India is where the problem is going to be. And where we think we can be ahead of time. Next slide, please. Now, once COVID, the dust on COVID settles, I think we're all talking about build back stronger, build back better. How do we take, um you know, you know, build build back together? And I think one of those things there is we have I triple C connects, which is our at our virtual trade delegation to India. Um we'd like to welcome Invest Brampton and all other economic development organizations within Brampton to please, you know, join. Uh uh our our trade delegation. Uh one of our, we have six eh eh sectors that we're going to focus on. One is technology and startups, which is right in the wheelhouse of Beehive. Education, um automotive and e-mobility, tourism, food and agriculture and pharma. Um and medical devices and healthcare. So this is, um you know, ten days, um you know, ten states. So we will go virtually to ten states and and we definitely would like to to welcome the city to that. Next slide, please. And that is it. I think I'm on time. I'd like to really thank the city and 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 all the councillors, past and present councillors. Past and present mayors and a special thanks to um Mayor Patrick Brown. For his friendship and his cooperation and and support over all these years. And uh we look forward to to working with the city of Brampton even more closely in the near future and um I'm I'm open for questions.
Thank you very much, V J. Uh we do have uh Mayor Brown on to speak. Uh floor is yours.
Councillor Bowman and V G, I wanna thank uh the I triple C for your efforts to fundraise um for um. The difficult situation we're seeing in in India. There are so many family to family connections in our city. There's um a a deep bond of of family and friendship and. Um it was a pleasure to take part in your event and thank you for giving a platform in which you could have such a successful fundraiser coast to coast. Um I would note um that the company, the Ontario government who is purchasing those ventilators from is actually a Brampton company, O two Technologies. And it was great to see a Brampton made company able to contribute. Uh medical equipment in a time of need. And so those ventilators being purchased in Saskatchewan, Alberta. Uh in Ontario with contributions from across the country were actually manufactured in in Brampton. So not only are we seeing our residents step up with their generosity, it's also the sweat and toil of. Brampton essential workers that are actually producing these ventilators. And a shout out to a number of members of your board um who are from Brampton. I think I triple C has always had a strong. Presence in our community. And I know one of the people who was really involved in the fundraiser. Oxygen for India was a local Brampton businessman, David Capill. And so um I see a lot of intersections with our city and I just wanna let you know. We're proud to support it, proud to support this initiative and thank you for helping so many people.
Thank you very much, Patrick Brown. As always, it is the pleasure is all ours and and we we really look forward to to working more closely together.
Thank you very much. Uh councillor Plessy.
Uh thank you, uh Mister Chair. I was also just going to mention the uh the company that uh uh in Brampton, how proud we are of the the ventilators that they uh. Had sent to India, but I also wanted to mention uh V J, building back together. I I think that is a fantastic phrase. Thank you so much for saying that. Because that's exactly what we uh what we need to do. Thank you for your delegation.
Thank you. Thank you for for the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Plessy. I see no further questions on the board. Uh V J, thank you very much for coming in and delegating. Um I have a motion moved by councillor Willans to receive the delegations. Is there anyone opposed to this motion? Otherwise, your vote will count in the affirmative. Seeing none, so the motion carries. Thank you very much. Uh we now move on to item seven point four, a delegation from Ragav Patel. Brampton resident regarding traffic congestion on Sandalwood Parkway west of four ten. Uh welcome, Ragav.
Thank you. Uh before this presentation, I want to recommit to learning more about the treaty lands and territories of the Mississaugas of the Credit. Land on which the region of Peel operates. Members of council, I'm here today to talk about the traffic congestion on Sandalwood Parkway west of the four ten. Next slide, please. Sandalwood Parkway is heavily congested west of the four ten, especially during rush hours. It is mainly a two lane road west of the four ten. An obvious solution would be to expand Sandalwood to a three lane road. But residents in the neighborhoods along Sandalwood Parkway are very opposed to this idea. Because it will impact the personality of their neighborhoods. Another issue with a road expansion would be the impacts to local biodiversity. But traffic continues to increase and with more housing being built on Sandalwood Parkway, there's a dire need for a solution to address this issue. Next slide, please. Uh with this map, I wanna go over three main points. First, first, I ask you all to notice that Sandalwood Parkway has many turns. And is not as straight as nearby main roads like Mayfield Road or Bover Drive. These small turns compact traffic during times of high congestion. Secondly, I mentioned the environmental concerns of a road expansion on Sandalwood Parkway. Heart Lake Conservation Area is right at the corner of Sandalwood Parkway and the Highway four ten. I believe that the location of the conservation area makes road expansion an irresponsible option in environmental terms. Thirdly, I want to mention some of the housing being built on Sandalwood Parkway. Beside the Loafers Lake Recreation Centre, there is a new development called the Sandalwood. One hundred eighteen townhouse units and four semi-detached units right at the corner of Conestoga Boulevard and Sandalwood Parkway. This sandal, sorry, this housing development will inject a new source of traffic directly into the middle of of Sandalwood Parkway. Uh next slide, please. To address the traffic congestion, I am proposing adding bus turnout lanes to all bus stops west of the four ten. Uh buses stopping cause traffic to slow down significantly, especially at times of high volume. Bus turnout lanes allow buses to pull into a separate lane adjacent to the road and not slow slow down the traffic behind it. I believe bus turnout lanes will greatly improve the traffic congestion and I also believe that Sandalwood Parkway has the space available. Uh next slide, please. Uh this is an aerial view of an already installed bus turnout lane at McLaughlin Road and Bover Drive, just for reference. Next slide, please. Uh this is Sandalwood Parkway at Here Ontario Street. Uh the white rectangles are examples of bus stops that would be suitable for bus turnout lanes. Uh where I've indicated, there is roughly fifty feet between the curb of the road and the fence. Next slide, please. But there is more than enough space to install bus turnout lanes at the stop specified and many more along Sandalwood Parkway west of the four ten. To supplement my delegation, I have attached aerial views of almost all of the bus stops along Sandalwood Parkway west of the four ten. Found on pages fifty four to seventy of today's agenda and I believe that these show that there is ample space. Uh because of this and in response to the situation I outlined, I am asking council to build bus turnout lanes at all bus stops. Along Sandalwood Parkway west of the four ten. However, regardless of whether or not this proposal is carried forward. It is urgent that the traffic congestion on Sandalwood Parkway is addressed and I hope council will be able to help with this issue. I in conclusion, I just wanna thank everybody for listening and to all the staff that helped facilitate this delegation. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ragav. Uh we have councillor Plessy.
Thank you very much, Mister Chair. Um no questions of delegations and I don't see any other members, so I'm happy to move receipt of the. Delegation. Thank Ragav for uh making the suggestions that we're already currently looking at. And I encourage Ragav in the future to reach out to uh either councillor Willens or myself. Off to discuss uh any of these uh items for uh for Sandalwood. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mister Chair.
Thank you very much, councillor Plessy. Uh we have a motion moved by councillor Plessy to receive the delegation. Is there anyone opposed to this motion? Otherwise, your vote will count in the affirmative. Seeing there are no objection, the motion carries. Thanks very much for coming in, Ragav. Um next item is seven point five, a delegation from Glenn McIntyre, President, General Manager. And Rob Beatty, VP Hockey Development, Brampton Hockey Inc. Regarding a request for a home rink at South Fletcher's Recreation Centre. Uh welcome Glenn and Rob.
Thank you, Mister Chair, and uh hope everybody can hear me now. Um first off, uh happy birthday to councillor Plessy and uh Mayor Patrick Brown. All the best. I'm also a a May baby, so uh I'm gonna say May baby rocks, so. Anyways, um Brampton Hockey has uh been looking for a home center. For a a number of years or a place we can call a a home center and uh. Most recently, we've had discussions with the city uh regarding uh location of uh South Fletcher's. Um there's a big space upstairs that uh used to be uh Don Carey's restaurant. And uh we would be looking for um a study or a proposal uh to be looked into. At uh moving this, our offices and uh opening up a training facility. Inside uh this uh recreation center. Um on any typical weekend, about eighty percent of our membership uh pass through uh South Fletcher's. Uh on a Saturday or a Sunday or on both days um in ways of training. Um on ice practices, on ice games, et cetera. So that facility is well maintained by our own organization. The training facility would not only accommodate uh Brampton hockey members, but also uh. Many members of our other sports alliance groups. Um we would be the stakeholder in the. In the training facility, but um our training uh instructors would uh be outside people that. The majority of our sports alliance uh groups presently use at this time. Um they typically have about a thousand of our youth. Uh Brampton youth, and I'm not saying just hockey, about a thousand Brampton youth uh players training on a regular basis. The so-called uh off-peak hours, so daytime hours, weekday hours could certainly be utilized by uh many former. And current uh members of Brampton, we have uh a whole bunch of uh CFL players. As well as uh N C double A players that are training here uh under that umbrella as well, so. Um we'd be able to utilize uh different hours in there for sure and uh fill up a requirement of um. I guess, non-traditional use by the hockey group. Brampton Hockey has been around for seventy five years. Um well, seventy six now. We've been trying to. Celebrate our seventy fifth anniversary since uh COVID hit, so uh. We're um seventy six years now and we don't plan on going anywhere. Uh it's certainly been a struggle this last year and a struggle for everybody uh without a doubt. But uh we're committed to uh coming out of this in full force and uh. You know, this would be a great opportunity to entice players to stay in Brampton, uh bring uh. Players that have left Brampton back home and then also bring new membership into our organization. Um having a facility like this. Uh this facility would be a sports excellence uh. Facility and uh we would have it tagged as that uh type of uh procedure. I know uh the city's also talked about having a sports excellent uh program running here over the years and uh. We were, we are committed and willing to work with the other sports alliance groups uh to make this a a place to play uh without a doubt. And all I'm asking is that we explore or the city explore the opportunity of having uh. Us move or expand our hockey operations into this location. And last but not least, sorry, uh the youth hub that's going to be going on uh. It's South Fletcher's over the next uh couple of years. We would be uh committed to working with that group as well. And uh getting them involved in uh our hockey program or other programs. And with that, I'll pass it over to Rob Beatty. Uh some of you may or may not know, but uh Rob's been uh. Involved in our organization for twenty plus years as a volunteer goalie instructor and is most recently uh. Been elected to the position of VP of Hockey Development. So I'll pass this over to Rob and I'm gonna let him close it off, please. Thanks very much for the time. All the best.
Thanks, Glenn. Um good morning, Honorable Mayor, Chair Bowman, members of council, staff. Thank you for the opportunity to share this uh Brampton Hockey vision of this high performance center for the South Fletcher's Sportsplex. I just wanted to thank uh Regional Councillor Maderosin, Councillor Bowman. Last week for meeting with us and talking about this opportunity to come to uh to this virtual. Uh meeting to uh to to be a delegation to discuss this opportunity. I just want a little bit to expand on on Glenn's introduction and give you a little bit more of the vision of this uh high performance center. The center would be an inclusive for every single athlete in Brampton to train. They're looking at, uh, they're reviewing their approach to leasing and selling property to nonprofit organisations, so this may be great timing for us to get our foot in the door, to have these discussions, and move forward with a great opportunity for Brampton athletes. Um, again, inclusive and certainly something that we think is, is needed in this community for the, uh, the athletic population. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thanks very much, Glenn and Rob. Uh, we do have a couple of people on the board, starting with councillor Maderos.
Thank you through you, Chair, and, and first of all, thank you, uh, Glenn and Rob for, uh, coming today. Um, based on a lot of the questions I want to ask, you've already addressed right up front, and, and, you know, one of those my questions is how would you be interested in supporting the, the youth hub, and, uh, you've answered that, and, um, you know, I guess just one little point of clarification, uh, which I heard, so even though the ask is, uh, on, uh, in terms of Brampton Hockey, uh, you had mentioned that sports alliance, so this training facility would be open to also other sort of sports, or I guess, members of, uh, sports alliance. Did I hear that correctly?
Yeah, a hundred percent. Uh, we would look, whether it be basketball, whether it be, um, baseball, whether it be soccer, whether it be cricket, any athlete who's looking to get to the next level and have an opportunity to perform, um, or look for that high-performance training opportunity, this would be available to them.
Oh, that, that's fantastic, and, and through you, Chair, I'd just like to move a motion, I'd like to move a motion for, uh, staff to report back, uh, on that possibility, um, of, uh, of, uh, creating a, a centre of excellence, um, and I'll just direct, uh, staff to work directly, uh, with the Brampton Hockey Association, and also consult with members of, uh, the Brampton Sports Alliance, uh, um, about, uh, that possibility. I just think from a promotional perspective, um, it would be great because it lines well with our tourism strategy, uh, sports tourism specifically, and, uh, uh, also I do know that, uh, it is a hotbed, uh, for hockey, and then after specifically within the area it is, uh, in terms of location, it's just a fantastic location, uh, close to major highways, uh, uh, also, uh, with a very diverse community, uh, I think it's an opportunity for us to, uh, really, uh, promote sports excellence and get people engaged in, in sports like, uh, hockey, so I'm happy to move it, and, uh, thank you very much for, uh, coming forward, and, uh, certainly on today's, uh, birthday, uh, for Mayor Brown, uh, the opportunity to speak about hockey, I think, uh, uh, and the idea of creating a, a centre of excellence for hockey would be, uh, something that, uh, he would be very much interested in. So thank you very much, and, uh, thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, councillor Maderos. We will move on. Uh, Mayor Brown is next on the speaking list.
Well, I can't, um, agree enough with councillor Maderos on that one, um, and I'm glad that we're gonna get some more information on this. I just wanted to say, um, Glenn, Brampton Hockey does such an exceptional job, um, and, uh, of course, I think we should be, um, supportive and accommodating, um, of your request to have a home rink, um, and I just want to underline the fact, when you've got great organisations in your community, they give back, they mentor, uh, young people about the importance of, of teamwork, but beyond that, you know, I'm pretty sure when it comes to a food bank, uh, drive, the gift of giving, um, Burlington Hockey and, and Brampton Hockey are probably the, the, the two most successful in the country for supporting local food banks, and so, um, I don't want it to be, um, forgotten for a second, that it isn't just about getting on the ice and, and learning the sport, um, you help instill positive values, um, and a sense of community and giving back into everyone that goes through Brampton Hockey, and I just think we should be, uh, grateful for, um, and appreciative of, of the incredible work you do. So Glenn, um, and Rob, I just want to say, um, thank you for your efforts, uh, I know it isn't, um, it's more than, um, a position you take on, uh, this has been a passion for you, and it's very evident.
Thank you, Mayor Brown, and I, I forgot to mention about the gift of giving back, um, we've ran that programme minus this past year for, uh, five years. We've, uh, topped well over five hundred thousand pounds of food, uh, collected, and it's all been donated, uh, back to our friends at, uh, Regeneration, and, uh, they distribute, of course, throughout the community, and, uh, we're planning on coming back with that bigger and better than ever next year too, or when we're allowed to, uh, gather like that again, for sure, so. I'll be coming back to council at some time, whenever we get those dates all ironed out.
Thank you very much. Uh, next on the speakers list is, uh, councillor Williams.
Hi, good morning. Thank you through you, Chair. Hi, Glenn, thanks for coming in today. Um, I have a daughter who plays hockey and loves it, and, uh, really disappointed that the hockey season was, uh, cut short because of Covid, um, so just wondering if you're, like, what the relationship is with the candidates, and if you're, if you're looking to see girls' hockey be a part of this initiative as well? If you could speak to that, that'd be really great.
Thank you, uh, councillor Williams. Um, presently, uh, our, the fellows that run our training facility or do a lot of dry land training, uh, for our group are also currently training, uh, two hundred and fifty-five girls out of the candidates' organisation. Um, I've worked with the candidates over the years in the, in the past, and, um, we certainly have girls playing in our own league, um, as well, so, uh, we'd be willing to come up with some type of an arrangement that is suitable for everybody, without a doubt, and whether that's hockey, soccer, basketball, lacrosse, baseball, it doesn't really matter. This would be something for all youth in Brampton, for sure.
That is excellent to hear. I think, uh, um, girls' hockey is growing, and, um, you know, the, the interest is definitely expanding, and, uh, you know, seeing more of our, our women's hockey, um, expand in Brampton, I know that we, and, and just the work that you do with, with hockey in Brampton is so important, and so I, I just think we, making a centre of excellence is going to be really great for Brampton and for boys and girls' hockey, and I'm really excited, um, and happy to know that you're bringing us women along as well. I think it's excellent. Thank you.
Yeah, and, and I must comment, Rob Beatty is probably gonna comment, but Rob has very strong ties with the candidates' organisation as well.
That's awesome. Great.
I just wanted to add through the Chair, through Chair Bowman, uh, to councillor Williams, that I did speak with, uh, two of the candidates' executive last evening, and I've worked with them for a number of years, and they're really excited about this, and I shared their, uh, the vision and, and certainly the, the inclusiveness of having every sport, having every gender, and certainly looking at all the options there for, you know, all the different youth in Brampton to take full advantage of this opportunity.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, uh, councillor Williams. Uh, move that the Chair be heard, just for a brief comment. Seeing no opposition, thank you very much. Um, I just, I just want to comment, um, I think this is a, an excellent, uh, opportunity for the city of Brampton. Um, there was a couple of councillors, um, including myself, that brought this forward in twenty fifteen to create a Centre for Hockey Excellence, um, so there may be some reports, uh, already made, um, that we had given back to us, um, and you did mention the gift of giving back, which is one of the, one of the really key initiatives that, uh, Brampton Hockey does, and I, I believe last time we did it, we had ninety-six thousand pounds that year of food that went to the various food banks, um, and I know that, uh, I was involved in, in every one so far, councillor Williams is involved, uh, councillor Plessey's been involved, and it was incredible to see councillor Fortini driving a forklift with skids of food, um, on the final day when we had to clean up a couple of years back, so, um, it is great community involvement, so, um, I see no other questions. Uh, so I have a motion moved by councillor Williams to receive the delegations. Is there anyone opposed to this motion? Otherwise, your vote should be counted, counting in the affirmative?
Mr. Chair?
Oh, yes, sorry.
Just to confirm, it's, it's receive the delegation and refer to staff for a report back as moved by councillor Maderos.
Yes. Yeah, I'm sorry. Thank you, uh, thank you, Mr. Clerk, uh, referring back to staff as well. Any opposed? Seeing none, that motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay, that, uh, moves us through all our delegations. As far as I know, Mr. Clerk, there was no added delegations?
There are none, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Uh, we will move on to Legislative Services section. We have no staff presentations, no reports. We do have two, um, new business items. Eight point three point one was, uh, brought forward by councillor Plessey, so I will turn the, uh, Chair over to him.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, as per our, uh, discussion on, uh, Legis, um, Legislative Services Policy and, uh, uh, the Bylaw Update Committee, sorry, I'm having a little bit of a brain cramp here, um, we, uh, we acknowledge that the order of the agenda currently, um, i- it does leave for delegations to be put off a little while, um, so I'd like to see if, uh, councillors would be up to having, um, delegations come, uh, before, uh, government relations, and I, I, I know I was one of the councillors that supported, um, government relations being first on the agenda, and if my memory recalls, it was councillor Williams that, that put that forward, um, and I, for the life of me, I don't remember why, but, um, I'd, I'd like to see if there's a, an opportunity where we can just enter into a pilot, um, uh, because if we, we can't just, just change the order of agendas going forward, we would have to put that out for public consultation, uh, and whatnot, so I'd like to see if, uh, we could just enter into a pilot until we, um, until we bring back, um, the, uh, the requests or, uh, what comes out of, uh, policies and, and, uh, our, our procedure, sorry, Procedure of Bylaw Committee. If any members would be opposed to that, if not, then I would like to put that forward.
Thank you very much. I think I see councillor Williams to speak to this item, or was it the last item councillor
That was actually the last item. Um, it's councillor Williams that I believe is up next.
Thank you, yes, councillor Williams is next, so councillor Williams, you have the floor.
Yeah. Thank you through you, Chair. Yeah, I, I'm, I'm tending to agree with, uh, with councillor Plessey here, the delegates do come out of their own time and that, and, uh, I did put the government relations at the start of the agenda last, uh, last term of council, he's correct, um, but we didn't have as many delegations back then, uh, coming, so it is important that we hear from the delegations first, I do believe, so I'm, I'm good with this, yeah. I think maybe a trial period, we will be, would be sufficient, and see how it works, yeah, for sure.
Thank you very much. We have a, uh, a motion moved by councillor Plessey that the order of the agenda for committee of council, uh, be altered to move delegations ahead of the government relations item for a trial period of three months. Is there any opposed? Seeing none, that motion carries. Thank you very much, councillor Plessey. We will move on to the next, uh, new business item, eight point three point two, and that was councillor Dylan, I believe it was, vehicle noise.
Um, thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. Um, I have a motion which I'm gonna read, I also emailed it to council this morning, so, Mr. Clerk, if you can get the, uh, motion on the board, uh, similar motion was also passed in Mississauga, was facing a similar problem as, uh, as Brampton in, uh, excess loud modified exhaust systems in cars. Um, I know I hear them probably on a nightly basis, and, uh, um, I've been contacted by many, many residents complaining about it, we've had a number of conversations with, um, P O Police as well, so, um, I'm gonna read, uh, the motion. So whereas according to section seventy-five of the Highway Traffic Act, uh, every, uh, motor vehicle shall be equipped with a muffler in good working order and in constant operation to prevent excess, excessive or unusual noise and excessive smoke, and no person shall use a muffler, cutout, straight exhaust, uh, gutted muffler, Hollywood muffler, bypass or similar device upon a motor vehicle, whereas the act of modifying the exhaust system of a motor vehicle is not currently an offence under the HTA, and as a result, muffler and auto body shops continue to provide such services, which allows individuals to modify cars that lead to unsafe vehicles, whereas P O Regional Police have been actively laying charges pursuant to section seventy-five of the Highway Traffic Act against motor vehicle operators whose vehicles make excessive or unusual noise or produce excessive smoke from the muffler systems that have been modified. Whereas on October twenty-eight, twenty nineteen, the province of Ontario introduced Bill one thirty-two, Better for People, Smarter for Business Act twenty nineteen, which in part sought to amend the Highway Traffic Act to include a new section seventy-five point one that will make it an offence to tamper with motor vehicles by A, removing, bypassing, defeating or rendering inoperative or all or part of a motor vehicle's emission control system, or B, modifying a motor vehicle in a, any way that results in increased emissions from the level to which it was originally designed or certified by the manufacturer of the motor or vehicle, whereas section seventy-five point one of the HTA will also prohibit the sale of tampering devices that can create excessive noise or smoke on our streets and in our neighbourhoods. Whereas on December tenth, twenty nineteen, Bill one thirty-two received royal assent, however, the Lieutenant Governor has not yet proclaimed seventy point five point one of the Highway Traffic Act despite, uh, more than a year having passed since the bill received, uh, was passed and received royal assent, whereas on May fifth, uh, twenty, twenty twenty-one, the city of, uh, Mississauga passed Resolution zero zero nine five dash twenty twenty-one in regard to provincial action against noise makers, therefore be resolved in recognition of the continuous problem of Brampton and neighbouring municipalities related to modified mufflers that can create excessive or unusual noise and excessive smoke, that council make an urgent request to the province of Ontario to have section seventy-five point one of the Highway Traffic Act proclaimed and brought into force immediately, uh, and that a request for a measured decibel count to the Ministry of Transportation, that exhaust systems will not be available for sale and will not be permitted in Ontario if they have the capability of exceeding eighty decibels, that council request further amendments to the HTA related to permitted decibel counts for exhaust systems, including stricter penalty provisions such as a fine with a minimum of five hundred dollars and a loss of three demerits points. That council requests the province of Ontario to provide funding to the police services in Ontario to be equipped with approved decibel monitoring devices in order to enforce effectively and efficiently, and that a copy of this motion be sent to all Brampton area members of provincial par, par, parliament, excuse me, and association of municipalities of Ontario, and P O Regional Police for their information, and I want to thank councillor Adasco from, um, Mississauga who actually crafted this motion. I think it's important that we stand with them, uh, in, in, in this issue that's ever increasing, and I think this is coming to P O Regional Council as well, if I'm not mistaken, um, but I think it's an important issue that we kind of have a unified front on, especially in, in the P O region where we see this as an increasing, uh, issue, so the motion is on the floor, and, uh, I'll give it back to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, councillor Dylan. We, uh, have a few speakers on the list. Uh, first up councillor Maderos.
Thank you through you, Chair. Just very quickly, thank you, uh, councillor Dylan for bringing this forward. Um, you know, these are one of those issues, uh, I've heard, uh, from many residents, and, and, uh, like, to be quite frank, it's one of those issues that sometimes you know, don't-
And that a request for a measured decibel count to the Ministry of Transportation, that exhaust systems will not be available for sale and will not be permitted in Ontario if they have the capability of exceeding eighty decibels. That council requests further amendments to the H T A related to permitted decibel counts for exhaust systems, including stricter penalty provisions such as a fine with a minimum of five hundred dollars and a loss of three demerit points. That council requests the Province of Ontario provide funding to the police services in Ontario to be equipped with approved decibel monitoring devices in order to enforce effectively and efficiently, and that a copy of this motion be sent to all Brampton area members of provincial parliament, excuse me, and Association of Municipalities of Ontario, and P O Regional Police for their information. And I want to thank Councillor Adasco from Mississauga who actually crafted this motion. I think it's important that we stand with them in, in, in this issue that's ever increasing. And I think this is coming to P O Regional Council as well, if I'm not mistaken. But I think it's an important issue that we kind of have a unified front on, especially in, in the P O region where we see this as an increasing issue. So the motion is on the floor, and I'll give it back to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Councillor Dillon. We have a few speakers on the list. First up, Councillor Maderos.
Thank you through you, Chair. Just very quickly, thank you, Councillor Dillon, for bringing this forward. You know, these are one of those issues I've heard from many residents, and to be quite frank, it's one of those issues that sometimes you don't, don't know exactly what to do with. And, and, you know, one of the interesting things is sometimes I think that we, and I'll speak for myself, get caught in with the big idea, and it's these type of grassroots issues that have, you know, big impacts on our residents, on our neighborhoods, on the quality of life in our city. So I'm happy to support, as I was happy to support at the region, and I thank you, Councillor Dillon, for bringing this forward, and hopefully that we can all support. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councillor Maderos, Councillor Williams.
Yes, thank you, Councillor Dillon. Now, through you, Chair, to Councillor Dillon, thank you for bringing this forward. It's, it's a big issue in Brampton. I, I get quite a few complaints from all over the wards that represent, but there seems to be a lot more complaints coming from residents in the M, N, and P sections because they are along Williams Parkway, Dixie Road, and Beaufort. And the noise coming down the road from some of these cars can be so intrusive. And, and I, I get it though, because Brampton is like the youngest city, and the attraction to having fast and loud cars here is really huge. And, and I know we've all been young before, so I can understand the appeal, but we do get older. And I remember when my first little one, when I, I used to have to deal with this one very loud muffler that would go down the street right around the time I would be getting the leak to bed. So that appeal for loud mufflers went out the window at that time. And, you know, but it's important that we recognize and acknowledge how excessive the noise can be. And so I know there's Operation Noisemaker, and the, the folks at Road Safety Services and the P O Regional Police have been working really hard to try and, you know, tackle this issue. One of the things that they were saying they were doing is working with the Insurance bureaus of Canada, and it's a great way to add another layer of accountability, because what they're doing is they're notifying the insurance companies that the car has been, had an altered or changed muffler, and in some cases, it's deeming the cars uninsurable. And when a, a person who's getting a letter saying that your car may not be eligible for insurance because of this altered muffler, it makes you wanna make a change to it pretty quick. So I, I'm just wondering, in order to support some of the conversations that are happening with the P O Regional Police and the Operation Noisemaker and some of the changes that they're looking to implement, I wonder if I could offer a friendly amendment to have a copy of this motion also sent to the Insurance Bureau of Canada, so that they can be aware that we're really making a push to have multiple access points to hold people accountable for making these alterations because of how intrusive and excessive the noise is becoming in Brampton with the number of vehicles who are altering their, their mufflers. So I'm offering that as a friendly amendment, Councillor Dillon, to have a copy of this motion also sent to Insurance Bureau of Canada. I fully support this. I think it's really great. Thank you for bringing it forward.
Thank you very much, Councillor Williams. Councillor Dillon, do you accept the friendly amendment?
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you very much. We have one more speaker, and that's Councillor Williams.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. They say that the Fast and Furious nine release date is sometime in June. I don't think so. I think it's out now. I support this a hundred percent. I probably hear this on an hourly basis on McLoughlin Road, it's just turned into a drag strip, and a lot of them are, speed has a big concern, but it's the noisy mufflers, it's the modified vehicles, and it's about time that, that the police have the authority and the actions to act on this. So thank you very much, Councillor Dillon, for bringing this forward.
Thank you very much, Councillor Williams. I'll, I'll add Steels to that list, anyone who lives close to Steels as well. We have a motion on the screen with one amendment. It's moved by Councillor Dillon. Are there any opposed? Seeing none, that motion carries. Thank you, Councillor Dillon. Next item on the agenda is eight point four, we have no correspondence, eight point five, Councillor Question Period. Do any members have any questions regarding the Legislative Services Section? If so, please use the chat function. I see none. Are there any public question period? Normally, we invite members of the public to come forward to the podium to ask any questions about any recommendation made by committee during this section of the agenda. Given our virtual meeting today, questions are sent to the City Clerk's office during the course of today's meeting to relay to the committee. There's a five-minute limit. Mr. Clerk, are there any questions from the public?
There are none, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. This concludes the Legislative Services Section of today's agenda. I will now pass the chair over to Councillor Maderos to chair the Economic Development Section of the committee agenda. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chair, or Councillor Bowman, and as there are no items, but there has been a new business item added by myself, I'll move that the chair be heard.
Yes.
Thank you very much. And I guess just a question to staff. I, I do know that even though it's under Economic Development Section, I do believe that Blain's group is involved in this. I did see on the referred matters list that this was still on the referred matters list, this item. And I just wanted to confirm, have we had a, an opportunity, has staff reached out to Ryerson regarding this initiative? It was based on the last presentation that they did several months ago.
Through the, I guess, to the chair, I just wanted to give you an update regarding our consultation with Ryerson. So as you're aware, Ryerson University cemented a proposal to the Government of Canada requesting nine point four million over a three-year period. The proposal requested five point one million for the twenty twenty-one period to secure the facility, purchase equipment, create a second cyber range, and operationalize the National Police Cybercrime Training School. So in consultation with Ryerson, the decision from the federal, the Government of Canada is pending, and there has been no solid indicators that would suggest that the approval is pending. So I have been in contact with Ryerson University leadership staff, Charles Finley, the Executive Director of the Rogers Cyber Secure Catalyst, and Matt Baker, the Associate Director of Government Relations, to discuss the project status. Ryerson University has continued to advocate for the federal funding, and they wanted me to confirm with members of council and use the term aggressively advocate for federal funding, and wanted to assure members of council that the project remains a priority for the university. The university also appreciates a motion that was passed by council in January twenty twenty-one and the continued support of the city. Personally, I'd just like to also thank Claire Burnett and the Economic Development Team for the continued support for the Rogers Cyber Secure Catalyst. And in consultation with Ryerson, the order of operation for the project is to secure the federal funding as a first step, and the second phase would involve discussions around, between Ryerson and the city as partners for the facility space and additional support. As we have demonstrated previously, once the funding is confirmed, the city and Ryerson will collaborate on components of the partnership, update council accordingly, and secure your further direction. So I do have a standing meeting with Ryerson University to discuss collaborative projects and government relations initiatives, and this is also one of the topics that we will continue to monitor. At this point, Ryerson University appreciates the continued support of members of council and their advocacy efforts with the federal government. So to answer, just for an update to members of the council, so we have been meeting with Ryerson, we've been talking about this initiative and, and other issues of interest to the city, and Ryerson is actually awaiting a decision from the federal government. Once that decision is made, we're, we're confident that it'll be positive, and we will work with the university to make sure that we provide the assistance they require to operationalize, and then also seek further direction from members of council.
Okay, thank you. There, and so this is a rise, and the reason why I brought this today, I do have bi-week, bi-monthly meetings with the MP and the local MP in the area, MP Sanya Soodoo. In speaking about this initiative, they do expect some form of action anytime soon. However, there was comments that the City of Brampton, we weren't so engaged or under their perception. So it's good to know that you've confirmed that you're speaking with Ryerson. So maybe at this stage before, while we sort of do, you know, while you prepare, I guess, the report, maybe just to show more support to the federal government, I'd like to move a motion, a, a letter of support, and it could be the mayor and with council, just providing a letter of support for a cybersecurity National Police Training College to be set up in Brampton, and, you know, signaling our, our, you know, willingness to work with them. But obviously, we'd still have to understand what those conditions would be and what exactly is the ask. I do know P O Police, the same request has been, been made. So essentially, what we're doing today is just sending it to the minister, the appropriate minister at the federal government, with a copy being sent to the local federal MPs with a, a letter of support for this training college coming to Brampton if possible. And then after, if we can just ensure Blain that you're connecting also while you're meeting with Ryerson, but also connect with the MP's office. MP Soodoo seems to be leading this initiative with Ryerson, just to ensure that they know that we're engaged in this process.
Yeah, through the, through the chair, sir. We will make sure we're engaged with the local, with the, with the MPs, and also continue to meet with Ryerson. And we do strongly support this initiative. And we do understand there's, it's incredibly important, and there's fourteen thousand members of the police service within, you know, an hours' distance of the city that could benefit from this education. So, yeah, I'll follow up with the MP's office, and we will, any support that you can provide to the federal government, I know would be appreciated by Ryerson University.
Great, thank you. I do see, sorry, I forgot that I was the chair. I do see Mayor Brown on the board. Yes, thank you, Councillor Maderos. I just want to say, wonderful idea. I had just spoken to Sonia Soodoo about this, who thought there may be some opportunities on this front too, and I think this letter will support Sonia's efforts. She was actually suggesting maybe it could even be through the RCMP standalone. So I, I, I think there may be some interesting opportunities here, and obviously, any policing institution for training, that would have some economic activity, jobs, construction, spinoff, people who are doing those courses, using local restaurants and local hotels or, or rental locations. And so I would love to see where this goes, and I'm happy to support it.
Thank you very much, Mayor Brown. So I do have a, a motion regarding providing that Mayor Brown, on behalf of council, send a letter of support for the establishment of Cybersecurity National Police Training College in Brampton to the federal minister, responsible for federal minister, and copy Ryerson University and the Brampton area MPs and MPPs. Are there anyone opposed? Okay, thank you. We go now on to our next item, which is Councillor Question Period. Any questions from members of committee? No? Public question period. City Clerk, are there any questions from the public?
There are no questions, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. And now I will hand it over to Councillor Singh.
Thank you. Moving on to the Corporate Services Section, ten point two point one, with consent. Is, do any councillors have any questions? Oh, we, Councillor Bowman.
Yes. Sorry, I didn't see it pop up, the screen's a little behind. Through you, Mr. Chair. I, I know in, that I got an email yesterday, yesterday evening regarding the report that I had asked for two weeks ago, C W two fifty dash twenty twenty-one, about the Sunshine List report. And, and I just, the question I have is, did this report, and I guess Sandeep is there, did this report have to be signed off by anybody? Is that, is that the reason it wasn't ready?
Through the chair, thank you for your question, Councillor Bowman. Yes, it does need, needs to be signed off by the respective parties, but that was not the reason. I finished the report on Thursday evening, which is when I started creating it in Escrib, and it was already too late because the agenda had been finalized. So it definitely was the amount of work, and then followed by, of course, there is approval chain.
And, and who's the approval chain on this? Doesn't it directly to the C E O from you?
No, it would be, it starts off with the Commissioner, Michael Davidson, and next up would be David as a C E O.
Okay. Okay, but this is, this is still trending for next committee meeting?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, that is it. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any other members have any questions? Seeing and hearing none, are there any questions from the public to the clerk?
There are none, Mr. Chair.
Okay, seeing and hearing none, I'll pass it on to Councillor Bessant, Chair Bessant, sorry, for Public Works and Engineering Section.
Thank you. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Members of committee, most of the items were placed into consent. So next, we have an item that was held by Councillor Santos, eleven point two point five, and that is the Automated Speed Enforcement Updates. Councillor Santos, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. I did have a back and forth email exchange with staff related to the question that I have, so my questions have been resolved. Thank you.
Well, very good. Thank you very much. So I have a motion moved by Councillor Santos to approve the report recommendations. All in, Councillor Bowman, is that a new question?
It is, sorry, Chair Bessant. Yeah, I just, I just had a question. We got, Councillor Maderos and I were given an update on this yesterday through Craig and his group, and I'm just wondering if Craig's there, because, you know, what we hear about the speed enforcement is that it's all about dollars, dollars, a new tax. But if, if Craig is there, if he can speak to some of the findings that were in that report in terms of the reduction in speed that resulted in some of these areas.
Through the chair to Councillor Bowman. Yes, on table two within the report, we did outline a number of speed reductions that we've seen through the A S E program. And through those, through those, through that chart, that table, we have seen significant decreases. And based on some of our typical traffic calming measures, we have not seen these type of decreases in any of the programs that we've implemented in the past. As you can see, if you do have that report available to you, we have seen some double-digit reductions, and in some of the areas, some significant reductions as far as eight kilometers per hour. So we, we have seen this reduction, and what it is telling us is it's starting to capture some of these individuals that are the outliers, the, the individuals that we receive most of the complaints about driving excessively through these areas. So as we roll this program out, and as these cameras are, are relocated within other areas, we're hoping that it will capture some of these other individuals. As far as a dollars and cents perspective, that would be something I would refer to Acting Commissioner Morrison from the P O A side of the business, through that group administers the, the P O A and the revenues through this program.
Before you leave, Craig, could you just, could you just let us know some of the highest speeds that were recorded by some of these cameras?
Just, just bear with me, councillor, I'm just gonna bring it up. Hi, Craig, it's Kevin. I can help you out if you want. Sure, if you have your. Yeah, through the chair to Councillor Bowman, we have seen some pretty high speeds recorded. Sorry, I'm just trying to get my video on. Heartlake Road, we had someone going one hundred and forty-two kilometers per hour. That would be ninety-two over. Elgin Drive, west of McLoughlin, one hundred and thirty-two kilometers per hour. That is eighty-two over. Some, some more local roads like Father Tobin, east of Sunny Meadow, one hundred and twenty-four kilometers per hour, that would be eighty-four over the speed limit. So we are getting some pretty significant speeds when the program just started, I guess, before people started to realize that the camera is there, so. just started, I guess, before people started to realize that the camera is there. So, um, the people getting, getting those tickets probably were in a bit of shock, getting probably seven, eight hundred dollar tickets, but some of these would be considered stunt, stunt driving as well, so they would actually have to appear in court.
That's great. Uh, again, um, I just wanted to point out to, to the residents and some of the people who are listening that, you know, these, these speed cameras or the Automated Speed Enforcement cameras, um, they're not there strictly to, uh, to increase revenue for the city. They are there for a reason. Um, they've caught some tremendous speeds. Um, they've been essential in reducing some of the speeds on these roads. And, I mean, uh, in, in our meeting yesterday, I commented that, you know, in some cases, it only takes a speed reduction of eight or nine kilometers per hour, um, to prevent what could have, what could have been a fatality. So, um, I thank you for this report, um, and I look forward to other reports. I, I don't need to hear from, uh, Commissioner Morrison on the charges and, and things like that. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Counsel Bowman. Uh, seeing no further questions, therefore have a motion moved by Counsel Santos to approve the report recommendations. Seeing none opposed, that carries. So we, all of our correspondence was in consent, so next is eleven point five, council question period. Do any members have questions with regards to the public works agenda? Counsel Santos?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. Um, I just wanted to ask a question, perhaps from Alex and, um, Jason, Commissioner, oh, sorry, General Manager Malloyevich, as well as Commissioner, um, Jason, um, about just any updates based on the last motion we passed at council regarding downtown revitalization. Um, there is still some sentiment in the community that, uh, we're trying to delay this project, so I'd like an update from staff in terms of, uh, what has happened since we placed that motion forward.
Well, you, through you, uh, Chair, to Counsel Santos. Um, all the departments have been working, um, together, and have been for quite some time, in terms of looking at what opportunities we have. I know that, uh, my colleague, um, Commissioner Schmidt Chakari, uh, is looking at putting forward an interim report on June twenty-third that would fall, uh, in line with, uh, the LRT report that we're targeting to come forward to council with. So I think there'll be some good information in there that'll be very helpful. In the interim, though, I know that there's many, um, many parts of work that have been, uh, going on. For example, vacancies in the downtown, I know our community services are working closely with AgDev in terms of looking at some of the vacancies and some stakeholders that are interested in those vacancies. I know the new partnerships in Innovation District, um, are really, um, increasing in terms of the interest in the downtown area, and, uh, we're hopeful to bring between fifty and seventy-five new businesses per year as a result of all the activity that are going down in that area. Um, our Works Department, uh, are looking at also the, including, you know, some of the short-term items like, uh, benches and planters, and also looking at what, uh, opportunities there might be available in Kenwillan Square, uh, and also, um, the Garden Square. There's also many other items that we're working closely with, uh, on, on different departments, part of that meanwhile strategies where, look at, you know, the customized, uh, retail window decals, the, the window activities, um, activations, I'm sorry, the paintings of, um, many areas, exterior walls and empty lots, um, to change and, and, and with the old different vibrant colors. Uh, so all these are our short-term items that we're looking at exploring and getting done, uh, in the very near term. Uh, but again, with all the work that the region's looking at, and I know there's a regional report that's going forward tomorrow on some utilities, uh, utility work, we're trying to coordinate all that and making sure that what we put forward, an interim report, is something that council will understand what we're moving forward with and what, uh, some recommendations may be coming out of that. So there's a clear focus on that. I think, uh, we're all moving in the right direction on that, and we're hopefully to report back more details on that on the twenty-third.
Okay, thank you so much. Any further comment from Jason, perhaps?
Thank you, Counsel. Through you, Mr. Chair. I think, uh, my colleague, Alex, did a very good summary, very comprehensive. Uh, not to repeat anything, but, uh, basically, I think we, uh, right, uh, the day after we, we had the recommendation from council last week, uh, staff have put everything in motion, and we, we had quite a few meetings and discussions, and like Alex said very well, uh, we're looking at a, a short-term, midterm, and long-term, and, uh, we will be coming, uh, with an interim report, uh, within those ninety days. So we're not gonna wait till ninety days to get your report, we're gonna come with an interim report, and, uh, in June, and, uh, will encompass a, a very comprehensive, uh, approach to, in particular, in the midterm and, uh, and the short-term.
Great, thank you very much. And just for clarification, again, I will ask the question again, um, to Jason and, and to Alex, based on the motion and the work that you're doing now, um, do you believe that we're trying to delay this process in terms of revitalization of downtown, or are we trying to move this as quickly as possible?
Uh, through you, uh, uh, Mr. Chair, Counselor Santos, I think, uh, the approach we're taking is, uh, uh, work on two tracks, uh, on the, on the short-term, immediate-term, midterm, and long-term, which means we're not looking at doing any delays here. I think if anything, we're, we're looking at how we're gonna expedite, uh, what is the low-hanging fruit, and, uh, what's the quick wins we can do in the short-term, while at the same time, uh, being able to overlap and work in parallel, uh, with other initiatives, uh, that, uh, will provide results in the midterm and the long-term.
Wonderful, thank you very much.
Everybody welcome back.
Thank you, Counsel Santos, and I just have a quick question, uh, that touches on the, um, speed enforcement reports. And one observation that both Counsel Santos and I made when, uh, staff gave us the updates, and, uh, this can tie, potentially tie into some of the other things that we're doing across the city to, uh, change the way folks use our roads. Uh, one of the greatest differences in the, uh, speed reduction, uh, from the ASC implementation was a change, a reduction in seventeen point eight-five kilometers per hour, uh, on the Main Street North, uh, sorry, Main Street South section, uh, just north of Frederick Streets. Uh, now, that particular stretch of road used to be four lanes, so two lanes in each direction, uh, but, uh, thanks to our active transportation, uh, was, uh, changed to two cycling lanes and two, uh, a lane in each direction and a turn lane. And if staff could just provide a quick, uh, comment on whether or not that type of change, uh, may have also had a profound impact on speed reduction, not, it may not have been just the fact that there is a camera there. Do we have any, uh, insights or, uh, understanding of how these changes come, uh, may combine, uh, to help us to reduce speeds on our roads?
Uh, through, through the chair to Counsel Vicente. Um, again, what we, what we've found as practitioners is that as we, as we narrow the roads, uh, it makes the road less desirable to speed. So, uh, if you think about some of the smaller, narrower roads, uh, if there's lots of boulevard furniture, uh, trees within the boulevards, it gives the driver that perception that they're traveling at a higher rate of speed, therefore they tend to reduce their speed. So, in what we've done on, on Main Street by adding in the active transportation element, we have, uh, narrowed that feeling for the driver to, uh, traverse that section of roadway on Main Street. So as you mentioned, um, not only did the automated speed enforcement camera contribute to the, the lowering effect of the speed, also the, the narrowing from four to two lanes. But, um, what we also saw, though, on, on Ray Lawson, for example, a four-lane collector roadway that we did not narrow down to two lanes, we still saw, uh, over a ten-kilometer-per-hour reduction within that location. So, um, taking those, taking those two roads into effect, um, you know, we've, we've seen a, a seven-kilometer-per-hour reduction, um, due to the active transportation element added on that corridor.
Yeah, and, and I think that that's, uh, interesting. And, uh, as we, uh, move, uh, or relocate these, uh, cameras around, uh, it would be very interesting, I think, for us all to understand that, uh, when you change the configuration of the road, it also can have a profound impact on, as you say, how folks, how fast they feel that they are driving on a road, and, uh, seeing as we want to increase safety and, uh, also, you know, uh, a, a, a more manageable speed can contribute to better flow. Uh, uh, and, uh, I think that the, the combination of all of these factors, uh, can significantly enhance the safety on our roads and, uh, the usability of them. So I just wanna thank you for answering that. And, and with that, uh, thanks, Craig. We'll move on to questions from members with regards to this section.
Sorry, Mr. Chair, you were breaking up. If you were asking if there's any public questions, there are none.
Thank you, that is what I was asking. And so with that, I will now pass the chair to Counsel Santos to chair the Community Services Section of the Committee Agenda.
Thank you very much, Counsel Vicente. The next, um, section of the agenda is Community Services. I believe the only item that was held was item twelve point two point three, the Rose Theater Accessibility Efficiency Upgrades held by Counsel Willens. Counsel Willens, you have the floor.
Thank you, through Chair. Just, just quickly, um, great report, thank you very much. It's always good when we're looking at upgrading on the accessibility features of, of any facility. Um, just a quick question, though, another years ago, I think it predates even, uh, last term of council, there was a, uh, I think it was called Taxation from Ticket Sales Fund, and what it was used for, I believe, was to take, uh, money set aside in an account that, um, will be used for capital costs at the Rose Square and, right, the Rose Theater. So I guess there's two quick questions that staff can come back with, don't have to answer today, is, is the program still in existence, and, um, where, there's must be some money, I think there was probably close to five hundred thousand sitting in that account, I'm just wondering if it's still sitting there? Um, or if it's not, where's it gone? Um, so that's just maybe if you can bring a report back, Mary Ann, I think this would probably be directed to you. That would be great, thanks. I know it predates you and it predates some of the staff we have now, but maybe you can do a little digging, because I know there was a fund. Thank you.
No problem, will do, thank you.
Thank you, uh, Counsel Willens. Um, and I see that Commissioner Nader has taken that as a, as direction to bring back a report based on, uh, what Counsel Willens has asked for, but we do have a motion moved by Counsel Willens to approve the report recommendations for this report. Is there anyone opposed? Seeing none, that motion carries. Um, the next item on this section is council question period. Do any members of council have any questions regarding this section, Community Services? I see no questions from my colleagues. Uh, next section is public question period. Mr. Clerk, were there any questions submitted from the public?
Through you, Madam Chair, none for this session or generally, uh, for the next item.
Thank you very much. Next section is referred matters list. Do any members have any questions or comments regarding the referred matters list? I see no further questions, and there were no public questions. Next section is closed session items. All items enclosed were put into consent, but I understand that we have some recommendations to pass. Uh, as so, over to you, Mr. Clerk, for those recommendations.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first item is fifteen point one, um, these, and fifteen point two, both were added to consent. Uh, Charlotte, if you can go to, uh, the motions arising from closed session. So the first on the screen is in regards to fifteen point one, a proposed or pending acquisition or disposition of land by the municipality or local board. Uh, within the closed session report is direction that was approved on consent that this motion be considered in public. So we'll just require a more...
I'll, I'll move it, Counsel, thank, I'll move it.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Singh moves the motion. Any opposed? Seeing no object, objections, that motion carries.
Thank you. The next item was fifteen point two, a proposed or pending acquisition or disposition of land by the municipality or local board. Again, a report was approved as part of consent, which included direction being given that the following motion be considered in public session.
I'll move this as well, it's my area.
Thank you, Counsel Singh, moved by Counsel Singh. Are there any objections to this motion? Seeing none, that carries. Um, the next item of the agenda is adjournment. Wow, great birthday present for Counsel Paleshi and Mayor Brown. Uh, our next committee is scheduled on Wednesday, June ninth at nine thirty AM. I have a motion moved by Mayor Brown to adjourn today's meeting. Is there anyone opposed to this motion? Seeing none, that carries. This meeting is adjourned. Please stay home, stay safe, stay healthy, get your vaccine shot when it's your turn, and please practice physical distancing and wear a mask. Have a wonderful afternoon.